Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you.
Today is Monday, December 12th, 2022, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, would you please call the meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this Board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the near future. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I will now take roll call. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
James Bonanno is absent. Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor is absent. Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Daniel Shanameo.
Here.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the resolution for Toll Brothers Asbury Urban Renewal LLC. Does anyone have any concerns about the resolution?
Just a question. Did we agree on six benches or eight? I thought it was eight. The resolution says six.
Six.
I have six in my notes.
Six is correct.
Six. Six is the number.
Okay.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion. Second.
Okay. The members that are eligible to vote are Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
James Bonanno is absent. Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
And Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Let's do this again.
I can't second.
You can't second the motion. Okay, because you're not eligible.
I'll second.
Sorry, I wasn't sure until after we were done with the roll call. So let's get two of the...
Yvonne's second.
I'll second.
Yvonne will be the second. Okay, let's run it down again.
Got it.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
James Bonanno, which is absent. Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the first item that's old business, we have Monroe Avenue Realty.
We're not ready on that, so we're going to ask that now to be carried.
Okay, I know that we were talking about some dates. What...
Yeah, the problem that I had early February...
We are going to circle back on that date per Jack, so we're just going to carry.
Yeah.
Carry to what?
Why don't you just carry it and then all renotice? There's a late February date, but I have new surgery that's scheduled, so.
Okay.
I have to wait till February.
So should we just carry it to a February date?
It's up to all of you.
I mean, whatever our...
Yeah, why don't we put it on for that first thing in February?
The first meeting in February?
February 6 or February 27?
Why don't we do the six? Let me see how I have that.
We'll be with new notice. And more than... I'm sure your list is stale. You need a new property notice. Please, thank you.
Okay, so you were saying February 6 with new notice?
Correct.
Okay, can I get a motion to carry this application to February 6 with new notice?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Yes.
All right, the next application that we have is 545 Lake Avenue Urban Renewal.
Okay, for the record, Rick Lambert is not in attendance at those meetings. However, he has watched the video and listened to the audio portion of both meetings. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll get an affidavit from you to that effect or certification. So we are the eligible to participate in both of these. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm May Andrew Karras, the firm of Fox Rushall. We have the application 545 Lake Avenue Urban Renewal LLC. This is a continuation of prior hearings on this matter and amended an update for amended site plan approval. We've already had significant testimony to revisions that we've made to the plans. We've had a significant amount of conversations with the Board's professionals trying to get the plans correct and all the revisions addressed. So with that being said, I'd like to get directly to testimony of my witnesses. First, I would call our engineer.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Please raise your hand. Someone's very testimony about giving this matter the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
He previously was qualified as an expert on...
Yes.
Just going to let him hook into his system.
Eight, five. I just want to confirm.
Norrie, do you check your exhibit list?
Eight, five or eight, six.
Eight, six.
Okay. So we're going to mark this as eight, six for identification. And why do we identify what it is that we're marking this?
This is the civil site plan set last revised December 7, 2022.
And you've made quite a number of revisions to the ten recorded by the council of state and its comments from the Board at the last, and also conversations that the Board's professionals, am I correct?
Correct.
Let's go through all those revisions.
Do you want to just go through them?
Go through the members.
Okay.
Wait, pardon me. Let me get my staff's one hand in case they have to turn. Excuse me, pardon me. Please raise your hand. You're someone's very testimony about giving this matter the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your free issue to the Board.
Tom Miller. Wardson.
Sorry about that.
So as we discussed before in prior hearings, the parking stall width has been reduced from the original approval from eight foot six to seven foot seven, and that was due to the changes in the stacker parking dimensions. And that requires a deviation from the zoning requirement of eight foot six minimum. The parking aisle width has also been reduced from 24 feet to 19 feet four inches, also due to changes in the stacker system, and that also requires a deviation from the minimum, which is 24 feet.
When you say changes in the stacker system, can you tell me what the changes are outside of obviously this foot, how many feet? When you say changes, what does that mean?
I think the architect in the prior hearing addressed that, those changes. I don't like...
So are we talking, because we could get into this. Are we talking to two stackers or the three stackers? What stackers are we talking about?
It's not going to be three stackers. It's going to be two stackers. It's going to be, we're back to 88 spaces.
Okay.
The pits, we've gotten a verbal from the DEP that there's no issue with pits as long as we don't use and we don't store cars there. And we're waiting for the written approval from the DEP to that effect. We've been had conversations with the Commissioner, and it has indicated there's no issue with the pits, but you cannot store cars there. I'll have Mr. Sakman provide further testimony in there. We'll scroll back to the original 88 spaces, and we would request that any approval, if approval is given tonight, be conditioned on obtaining that approval or that written confirmation from the DEP.
So you're not digging into this?
The pits are there. They're double.
But were the dimensions changed by digging the pits?
The equipment is different.
No, 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 the dimensions, 17, 6, 18. The drive aisles, were they reduced because of the pits?
I believe they were reduced because of the stackers.
Which are the pits?
Well, the stackers are mechanical equipment that extend down into the pits.
But did they change because we had talked about two stackers versus three? Was that the difference? Because we went from three to two?
Because we went from two to the three stackers.
Okay. And now we're going back to the two stack?
No, it's going to be the same equip, but we're not utilizing the pit. We're only going to use the three stacker as a two stacker. So you can use the equipment different ways. You can lock the pit. I'll have Mr. Sakman provide testimony.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, so Mr. Sakman is going to be dealing with all the DEP parking stacker discussion? Okay. We have also made adjustments to the lighting even since the prior hearing, and I'll go through that in detail when we get to the lighting sheet. But we are asking for deviations for color temperature, illumination levels of the property line, fixture mounting height, and that's it. Moving on to the site plan. And again, these are changes from the original approval, just to put it all on the record. The ramp at the door on the north side of the building facing 550 Cookman Avenue was shortened by about 10 feet, and we added a stair. That area is here, in the rear of the building. The ramp at the northwest corner of the property was shortened by approximately 13 feet, and that's the ramp over here. A walkway was added on the east side of the building to provide access to a new door, to the bicycle room, bicycle storage room that's over here. This is that new walkway. And then some additional steps were added, also on this east walkway. And as we spoke about at length in the prior hearing, the ramp in the air at the front entrance of the building was reconfigured fairly extensively. The accessible ramp increased in length by about 46 feet, so it's now totaled about 81 feet. And that, again, provides direct access to the lobby without having a separate entrance that was in the original plans, and also to accommodate a higher lobby elevation, which appeared during construction. The stair landing adjacent to the lobby, that's this piece over here, was extended westward by about 25 feet. And now the stair and this landing walk by about 225 square feet of the Lake Avenue right-of-way, whereas in the original approval, there is an encroachment area of about 56 square feet.
Why is that extended westward, the landing that's in the entry?
Between the prior approval and the...
Why? Why was it extended? It's approved or something.
I will let the Mr. Sakman or the landscape architect testify to the aesthetic reasons, but I...
We'll provide testimony.
My understanding is that it's aesthetic.
So can you tell us why you need the 25 extra feet? Why that was extended to the left of the lobby door? Because that was extended 25 feet, you mentioned.
Correct. Again, I think that's more of a design consideration.
We'll have additional consideration.
Is that in right-of-way?
Part of it is, yes. Part of it extends into the right-of-way.
Is the broken line the right-of-way?
Yes. And the stair and the knee walls associated with those extend a maximum of approximately 14 feet into the right-of-way compared to 5 feet in the prior approved plans. The ramp itself will occupy approximately 373 square feet of the Lake Avenue right-of-way, whereas an encroachment area of approximately 125 square feet was shown for the ramp on the prior approved plans. And the ramp and the knee walls associated with them extend approximately 15.5 feet into the right-of-way compared to 5.5 feet in the prior approved plans. In addition, a planter was added to the west of the lobby, and that planter with its associated walls extends approximately 3 feet into the Lake Avenue right-of-way. It occupies about 68 feet of the right-of-way area.
Did the size of the sidewalk change or what?
No.
What was that?
It is 8 feet.
Well, it is 3 feet on the pavers plus a 5-foot wall area, correct?
Correct.
And that's consistent all the way down to Lake Avenue, am I correct?
I believe so.
Wow.
As we discussed before, a concrete pad was added at the southwest corner of the building to accommodate a pad-mounted transformer at the request of JCPN. And in addition, plantings were removed along the rear of the building and replaced with either riverjack stone or additional concrete pavement. Moving on to the grading drainage and utility plan.
Just one second. Can you remind us? Can you get back to there, please? Can you remind us what's between the buildings, the two buildings? When you're saying that plantings were removed, now there's stone. What is between those two buildings? Because it's, for me, it's hard to tell. It's just a sidewalk?
It's just a walkway, yeah.
It's just a walkway, nothing else is back there?
There's nothing else back there. Just access.
And how big is the walkway compared to where the stone is? Or is it all stone?
Um...
Because it's hard to say from here.
Yeah, so there is a strip closer to the boom. We can clarify this, but there's a strip of stone close to the building, and then the rest is concrete. And then there's stone back here in this corner. We'll clarify that.
Okay. But that opening did not change? It's just that it's not going to be planters?
Correct. No, it didn't change in width.
Okay.
It's just material.
Okay. All right.
Regarding the grading, the finished floor elevation of the lobby was raised from 11.6 to 12.58 in the NAVDA data. And as we discussed before, grading in the front of the building was modified to accommodate this new ramp and stair configuration and also that higher lobby height. We added two small drains, one at the north side of the building in this ramp and stair area, and one at the elevated platform that was out at the front of the building to provide drainage for those areas tying into the drainage system that was previously approved. And again, the new electrical transformer and associated equipment at the southwest corner of the building was originally supposed to be across the street and at the direction of the city, working with JCPN, was moved to this location.
Who from the city? Ms. Alonso. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the lighting plan. So since the prior approved plans, we have expanded the lighting analysis to include the walkways at the sides and rear of the building, which were previously not included. We've also changed the grid interval for the analysis to 15 feet to comply with the new city lighting ordinance. And then we've changed a few of the lights even since the last hearing in coordination with the Board professionals and the city professionals. We have changed the street pole and fixture, and so those are fixture A, and those are the ones in that 3-foot strip along the curb. There's four of them. The original approved fixture was not available, and the, I think, a different fixture was installed. But again, in coordination with the city, we have decided to go with a fixture that in a pole that matches the Toll Brothers approved development, one block to the east.
Is that here in the plan somewhere?
Yes.
So we can see it?
I will. So this is that street pole, gooseneck, arm, fixture pointing down. We've gone with a slightly shorter pole compared to the Toll Brothers development. I think that one was 20 feet. This one is 14 feet with a 12-foot fixture height. But it's the same, the same style as the other one. Light B, which are these wall-mounted lights, is actually a newer version of the same one that was previously approved in the original plans, and those are spaced around the building to provide light from the building face and to eliminate some of these walkways. Those are mounted at 9 feet or 14 feet, depending on the location.
Are they all tampered?
Yes, they're, they, all of these fixtures meet the new city lighting ordinance in terms of their cutoff and shielding.
Are they dark sky compliant?
I believe all of them are, but I would have to double-check that.
And we need them to be?
I, understood.
We'll confirm.
Understood. And I believe in the city lighting ordinance that dark sky compliance, the certification is a recommendation, not a mandate, but we understand that that's important. And then light fixture C has not changed since the prior plans that you saw. Those are wall packs along the 550 Cookman Building to provide additional illumination along that shared walkway back there. And those look like this. Lights D and E on the plan are the existing Cobra Head fixtures across the street. They provide a little bit of lighting across the street, but not that much, but we wanted to make sure that those were included. And then light F is a new fixture compared to prior approval. Those are downlights in the, in front of the lobby area. And that, those fixtures look like this. So we are asking for a deviation...
What are they, in the softens thing?
I believe so. We are asking for a deviation for color temperature. Almost all of these lights are 3,000 Kelvin color temperature, and the city lighting ordinance requires that they be 2,700. We found that 2,700 Kelvin fixtures are difficult to obtain, not all styles come with, in that color temperature. The, there are two lights that are 4,000 Kelvin, and those are not part of the lighting model at the ground level. One of those is a downlight under each balcony. Those are 4,000 Kelvin. And then the very small stair lights that are mounted along the front stair at each or every other tread, those are also 4,000 Kelvin.
That sounds significant. Because if you're saying if it's under every balcony, you have a lot of balconies. Or am I misunderstanding that?
That is true, and...
That's significant. A significant difference.
I'll let the architect confirm, but it's my understanding that those are only turned on when the resident turns them off.
Irrelevant. Okay, thank you. So the ones that are 4,000 are under each balcony, and where else?
Just along the front stair, illuminating the treads of each stair.
So each stair, each stair level. So how many stairs are there? 10?
Yeah, about 10.
All right, so you have 10 stairs that have over 4,000. You have, I don't even know how many balconies you have that are over 4,000.
I will say I drove by prior to coming here, and the stair illumination does not look out of place with the rest of the lighting, particularly because the gym right here is lit with fluorescent lights, and this is a clear window. So you can see the light from that gym spills out onto the, this ramp and stair area. So it doesn't, it doesn't look very out of place.
Okay, that would be an opinion. Now, can we also talk about, since we're talking about opinions, when you're going down the ramp, I see the lights that are there today. What's the, how brighter they?
Those are...
On the ramp?
I don't know how bright those are. Those are temporary lights. It's my understanding that upon initial inspection, I believe from insight, I'm not 100% sure, the, there was a desire expressed to have that ramp illuminated, at least on a temporary basis, until the street fixtures and the rest of the building-mounted lights were operational.
So those are going to be, those are temporary?
Yes. They will be removed when all of the other lights are installed.
The gym is new too, right? That's the original proof?
Correct.
So is that light, those fluorescent lights, when are they on? When somebody goes into the gym or what? Is it out? Is there motion control? Are those fluorescent lights on all the night? Is it... I'll have Mr. Sakman. I believe there are motion control, but we'll have Mr. Sakman.
Is it your testimony that the lights that were originally approved were not available?
I believe the street lights were not available.
But all the other lights were?
Well, the wall-mounted lights are just a newer version of the previously approved.
My question is, the previously approved lighting, I thought you testified that it was not available.
No, he said that with regard to the street lights.
Okay, he just clarified that.
Yes.
But now he's changing it again to a different scenario.
And he said the one that he just pointed to is a newer version of what was approved.
And so the one that, the newer version, is a higher Kelvin rate?
Actually...
For clarity. Because if it stays...
Compared to the prior appro...
Right. The prior approval.
I can check that.
Jim, let's have you ask that question again.
I'm sorry, Jack.
Give us a direct answer to the question. Is it the same caliber?
The wall-mounted fixtures, and that's fixture V1 and V2, are 3,000 Kelvin. Fixer, the same fixture, just a prior version of it from the manufacturer in the previously approved plans was actually 4,000 Kelvin. So this is an improvement. It's a reduction in, or it's an increase in the warmth of the light compared to the prior approval.
And that's for one light? How many lights was that?
That is for the wall-mounted fixtures around the building, of which I believe there are, I'll give you the exact number, there are a total of seven.
So the wall-mounted lights now have decreased from 4,000 to 3,000.
Correct.
Okay.
But what was approved was 2,700, is that correct originally?
No.
No, he just said 4,000.
Okay, so evidently...
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
The original approved wall-mounted lights were 4,000 Kelvin.
Okay. And now you're redoing...
Even though the maximum allowed is 2,700? Maximum allowed is 2,700.
Correct.
So you're closer.
Mm-hmm. Then the only other changes to the plans is that we added this sheet to, at the request of the floor planner, to consolidate all of the lighting information on the sheet. So some of these lights are architectural lights that are at the higher levels of the building, but it's, it's all shown here for clarity.
Is that the extent of the issue?
Yes.
What I want to do is go through the reports. And the first report I'd like to go through is the insight report that has the dated updated report, summary line. Murray, what am I to do for our exhibits, for board of exhibits? Four.
Before.
Before is the next one? So let's make the insight report dated December 9, 2022, as B4. Why don't we mark, since we're marking exhibits, as B5, the CC report that's updated again, December 9, 2022?
Yes.
What I'm gonna have to do is take a look at what's been marked as B4 for identification. Just want to get on a number of things after doing the engineer for his project and his application. All right, just go through page two. There's questions regarding, or some review of mechanicals, that'll be architectural, signings will be architectural. Number four on page three, the architectural elements of the building, obviously architectural. Going down to number six, comments with regard to lighting. Six A, it notes that a revised lighting plan was submitted, and it asked for testimony regarding the changes, which I believe you have done in twenty sections. C, and that talks about the utilization of a range of 2,700 Kelvin to 4,000 Kelvin, which is already addressed. That. D, indicates that exceptions required permit light levels which exceed 0.1 foot candles at property lines. Neighboring property must be protected, testimony shall be provided. Can you address that comment?
Sure. So the property shares a lot line with the 550 Cookman Development, as you can see in the rear. That walkway is shared between the two buildings to provide access. And in addition, there are these narrow alleyways on both sides of the building, about five feet wide. And we feel that it's important to provide adequate lighting for safety for those areas.
I'm sure testimony of this plan provides that adequate lighting for safety.
Correct.
Is there any glare that may be in the windows that might be threatened by adverse lighting conditions or throughout those alleyways?
So the only windows, I believe, that are, that are at first level are along Moonstruck. And these lights are pointing downward to minimize that impact. Same with the lights on 550 Cookman here, those are pointing down also to minimize that impact. And then on the west side of the building, along the Bureau Garden, that's a solid grid wall. So there's, there should be minimal impact there.
What do you consider adequate on these walkways?
I think that the range of approximately one to four foot candles on average, as we show here, is, is adequate for safety.
Continuing on. Comment F states that detail for floodlights provided on the plans, and there's a request of testimony to be provided, indicating floodlights are for emergencies only during loss of power. Has that been noted on the plans?
Yes.
Okay. H, exceptions required permit a minimum maximum illumination ratio of 19.67 or amounts of tenors required, as of testimony, indicates revised plan indicates hint max range of 37.25 common.
Sure, so actually, the, the requirements relative to the minimum-maximum ratio and the uniformity ratio in the lighting ordinance apply to parking lots. So I could provide testimony about it, but as it relates to a deviation or a nonconformance, I don't think it's relevant.
So, so can we just hold on for a second there? I don't really know what that means, but the numbers look really big. So can you explain, someone explain to me what, what this minimum-maximum illumination ratio means? Because the variation is very large to me.
Sure, it's, it's the, it's the ratio of the, the maximum point on this grid to the minimum. And so because the grid width is so, is 15 feet, which is unusually large.
So can you point to me where, where that 15 feet is?
Between each, between each point here.
Okay.
So it's only doing the average from each point. So if there's a point that's directly under a light, for example, or very close to a light, so for example, this, this 8.6, it's almost directly under this, this fixture here, you get those, you get high levels directly under the light, which, which would make sense. So the ratio is just, again, you know, the, the highest point to the lowest point. So it's not, it's really based on where the grid is set, not necessarily what is the true maximum that, and, and again, it varies based on where you are, so...
So if you reduce the grid, that ratio would go down, am I correct?
I believe it would.
But there's no data to support that.
Well, but the reason it's applicable to parking lots and not in this scenario is, you know, you have a hot spot right over that light on the front of the building, but then you have, you know, your average comes from all these other areas that aren't related to that spot or that, you know, that lighting group. Whereas in a parking lot, you'd be looking at, you know, nice, uniform grid, right? With no obstructions, no, nothing in the way. And that's where we want to have, again, this uniformity without the hot spots. So applying it in this type of scenario, it doesn't really work properly.
Okay, so, so this is, these are hot spots, that's why, that's why the numbers are so large.
That's why the receiver relax.
Okay.
So, on the other hand, though, you know, a really high hotspot like that, you know, again, it's a signal about how those fixtures are oriented and how, you know, all the other lighting interacts. So we've got the, you know, we've got the street light kind of directly in front of a bunch of wall-mounted lights, and in front of the building is really highly lit.
It is very highly lit, even today.
Again, not as highly lit as the approved plan. There were like 11 wall packs on, on the original approved plan at 4,000 Kelvin, you know, so it was very bright and very white lighting on the front of the building originally.
Okay.
So this is an improvement, it still doesn't quite reach our, our ordinance standards, but again, the max, min ratio, average, uniformity stuff, again, doesn't, it's, it's a poor gauge for this application.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. Can I ask just one other thing about having to do with this lighting? When we were talking about the balconies and whatever lighting's on the balconies and how they're positioned, we have Moonstruck right next door. So how does that impact their, can they see these lights that are on? Or how, because...
I'm gonna let the...
Because are they down, I mean, how, how does, you know, is it a bright light to them, or is it just down-facing, so it's not impacting them in any way?
My understanding is that it's just down-facing.
That all of these are down-facing.
But I'll, I'll let the architect provide.
All right, so the architect will tell us about that. Okay?
There's a question, Jay, is any mezzanine level lighting proposed? And that's a continued comment, asking for testimony.
By mezzanine?
Rooftop.
Rooftop. I will let the architect.
Preferred to the architect. Continuing on, number eight has to do with parking. I believe he has addressed that with regard to the operation of stackers and size of the stackers. I'll have Mr. Sacken provide testimony on that. Oh, I'm sorry, recyclables, I'll have Mr. Sacken also provide testimony here. The parking lot depth for the stalls, I believe testimony was provided. Additionally, I'll have the architect address that. With number 10, similar to my prior comment. Isle width, I'll have the architect address that, I believe some testimony was provided already on that. Well, the operation of the driveway, again, architect, driveway curb cuts, again, the architect, number 13, 14 site triangles.
Well, yeah, 13...
Did I miss 13?
Yeah, 13, you indicated that you'd like an additional dimension on the plan?
Yeah, just that the zoning chart be revised to reflect the narrowest dimension between those two driveways.
No objection.
Nice and narrow.
We can do that.
And number 14 site triangles, can you respond to that?
At the previous hearing, I displayed an exhibit, testified to an exhibit showing the site triangles.
And the comment, the most recent comment with regard to the site triangles is that the applicant will provide testimony while complying. Proposed garage operation, again, Mr. Sacken will provide testimony on that, and that's number 15, number 16. Plans were revised, customers provide at the ADA liaison will be located within the parking garage, so that's been addressed. Eighteen, having the agreement with the DDP, again, Mr. Sacken will address that. Screen of interior equipment, commercial DDP transformer, we've addressed that comment. The right-of-way, I believe you have addressed that, and there was a comment with regard to edge protection and railings. Can you address that?
Sure. So I think there may not be enough clarity on the plans to show where all the railings are for ADA compliance, but we have no issue clarifying that, and the applicant will install railings where it is appropriate and required under the ADA.
Yeah, and in particular, the ramp in the front, I know some railings have been installed already, there's a few components missing of the railings that needs to be addressed. Either, I won't get into the details of what it is, but I'm happy to, if you have any questions during the field, we can reach out. But the, the railings in the front aren't compliant as they currently are.
All right, so railings will be installed for full compliance of ADA regulations, am I correct?
Yes.
Can we go back to 20 for a second?
Sure.
So this is where I was confused before, I said, who said to change it from wherever to across the street? But reading 20, it was originally approved by us to be in the mechanical.
That note, the plans that were approved were not with transform.
I'm just reading what I'm reading.
The last approved plans do not have the transformer inside, and I'm sure the utility company did not allow that anyway.
Does?
I think at, at some point in time, maybe, maybe it was the initial submission, there was an interior mechanical rule.
That is correct, but on the plans that were approved, that was taken out.
Okay, so that is the reason I would ask that question, because...
Yeah, I believe the plans are approved were April 2017, and those, that they did not have transformer on interior.
Thank you.
Robert, you agree with that?
I'm nodding about something else, sorry.
Oh, I said you're nodding, so I'm very... Are there any other comments or questions with regard to the insight?
Is, is 23 the architect, or is that some, is that somebody else, 23?
So assuming that, I, assuming that that eight-foot fence is the widest fence that covers some of the mechanical equipment at Moonstruck, that, I believe, has been returned. I think it might have been taken away during construction, but I believe it's there.
And if we look at the comment, it says on that testimony was provided, the fence would be replaced in time. So at the last hearing, we've known that we would replace that fence in time. So that was addressed at the last hearing.
Let's go back to 21 for a second. You say you're gonna comply with this, but it's not shown on the plans, correct?
We will add the detail on the plan to show full compliance of ADA requirements.
So can we have any discussion about these balcony lights that are 4,000 Kelvin? Or are we not gonna talk about it?
No, I'll have, no, you go. I'll have Mr. Sacken address that.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna call, once we get through the CC report, I'll have Mr. Sacken.
Okay.
I don't believe there's much more in CC, but I think most of this, not all of it.
Yeah, for the engineer's testimony, it's basically covered the stall size, the stacker pits, if, yeah, we'll wait for Mr. Sacken to address the aisle parking. Are we gonna have the... And I think most of what insights report covered on the lighting, my writing comments, I think, as far as the engineer's testimony, my, my comments are...
And I'm guessing that we can probably go back to it if we're missing something.
Before we leave the lighting situation, as I recall, the requirements are that the foot candle of point one at the property line is what is required. And the, a testimony here is that the, it's between one and four is, is considered adequate for these walkways. Is that something you agree with, or should, should the fixtures be different or to?
There's, there's, there's two ways to look at it. The first being safety, and when you're thinking about safety, the more light, the better. Thought I might disagree. But those values, I think, are pretty, pretty well represent what we look for on the walkways, parking lots, places where people are going to be walking at night. You know, and, and there was testimony that because of some of the constraints of the site being that the buildings that are right next to each other, you know, spillage on neighboring properties is almost unavoidable. But yeah, I think those, those values are, in terms of site safety, visibility, that's...
Okay, you're satisfied with that? That's my question.
Does that conclude the testimony? Yeah, but does that conclude your testimony? Does the planning board, does anyone from the planning board have any other questions for this witness?
I do.
No? You do, go ahead.
So this was originally approved in 2017, and you were the engineer?
No.
No? Okay. So when did you come on board?
Well, Dresden and Robb and the firm prepared the plans in 2017, but I was not the engineer who signed the plans at that time, nor the one given testimony.
Okay, so...
I came on earlier this year.
So you went through your report dated December 7, 2022, with all the changes, and there was quite a few of them, some minor, some major. Did you or any... Did you or anybody from your firm say to your applicant or even yourself, we should reach out to the city engineer or the planning board engineer or the planning board planner and tell them like something simple like, hey, guess what? The original fixtures were not available. We're switching to Plan B. And that's a simple one. I mean, the major ones building into the cities right of way and changing the facade and changing everything else, did you or anybody in your firm say, you know, these are serious changes, we should tell the city what's going on?
I believe I did at least one point communicate that, yes.
And was it done?
Well, the application that's before you today was submitted, so.
When did you suggest it should have been done?
I don't recall the exact date.
Within the past two months?
It was not in the past two months because this application was already underway. It was already under review by the board. We had hearings then.
There just seems that there are so many modifications that mentioning something like that once seems a little light. I think that that's what we're kind of getting at is that the modifications that have been made are so egregious, but let's move on. Yes, we have a professional, any questions for the professional of this?
I want to get a little bit of clarity because I know this is a big concern for you guys. Has your firm been doing the construction management on this project?
No, not.
So you're not onsite every day watching what's going on to be built? You turned over your approved plans to whoever's doing the construction and they're getting direction from Sacramento enterprises to, you know, if there's a material they can't get like streetlights and they say, all right, well, get me something else. They're talking between themselves, you're not involved in that conversation.
Prior.
You, I mean, Dresner, Robb.
Prior to the submission of this application before the board, we were not.
Okay.
Involved, to my knowledge, in a lot of those decisions.
So for all intents and purposes, up until they were encouraged to make an application.
A reapplication?
An amended application.
An amended application.
Dresner, Robb wasn't involved in anything between the approved plans and the new set of plans.
Well, I hope that we find out who was by the time the night ends.
So.
Okay.
Right, so you're going to make me open up another can of worms? Ramp increased in length from approximately 46 feet to approximately 81 feet. Now for that to happen, somebody had to draw a plan saying, make it 46 feet, now make it 81 feet. Who does that?
That was part of a separate landscape architecture plan that we'll hear testimony from.
The landscape architect said, make the ramps long.
Yeah, he's not saying that. We'll provide, I'll have Mr. Sackman provide clarity on this.
Okay.
So subsequent to this application, whatever happens, will the, will the governing body be required to reapprove changes to things in the right of way?
If the right of way has changed, yes.
Well, it has been changed. There's four times more stuff in the right of way.
Not above that, any approval change, yes.
Yeah, if the board approves, subject to.
No, that was my question.
The answer's yes.
So you'll be, whatever happens, if it's approved, it will end up in front of the governing body.
That is correct.
Okay.
I have a question. So some of the stuff we're being asked to approve has actually already been built.
So it's all been built.
It's all, well, some of the lights, the lights are there.
Yep.
It's there.
So the question is going to be, what do we, what do we do? Daniel, you know? So do we accept the fact that there are 4,000 Kelvin light fixtures on every balcony or do we say no? Or do we say, you know, and that's for everything, that's just one example.
You know, there's an example in New York where, you know, a guy built a building too tall and the judge made him chop the store.
So procedurally, I have just a question here just regarding, I know that there's a lot of discussion here about Mr. Sackman testifying, Mr. Sackman testifying. Should, and this is to Jack, to kind of say, wouldn't the landscape architect be the one that's responsible for answering the question versus the applicant? Or would the engineer be responsible to answer the question versus the applicant? That's what I just need to understand.
Not, really, it's fact sensitive. So at this point in time, Karis is saying this isn't the gentleman who can provide that answer.
Okay.
It would have to either be Mr. Sackman, which sounds like a lot of control to Mr. Sackman, so he'll answer those questions, or if landscape architect is asked and he says he made a decision to do such and such, that's fine.
Okay.
But you'll have to, that'll have to be laid out on the record and unfolded as you progress with the operations.
Okay.
I mean, I think it would be helpful to understand who was, how the construction administration was managed.
We understand. Let's get to the testimony. I think all those questions will probably be answered.
So I think what the clarity that we're seeking is who was coordinating the construction administration. That's all.
Let's get to the testimony. I think the testimony will provide some illumination of the decisions.
Okay. All right, so do our professionals have any other questions for this witness? At this point, no? Okay, we're going to open it up to the public. Now, if the public has any questions of this witness based on anything that was said tonight by this witness, please come to the microphone and you're welcome to ask any questions. Okay, your next witness.
Please raise your hand. This is where your testimony about giving this market the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Will you state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the applicant?
Carter Sackman, C-A-R-T-E-R, S-A-C-K-M-A-N. I am a managing member of the noting entity.
Thank you.
Mr. Sackman, there are a number of areas I want to get into. First, I want to discuss the parking garage, the stackers, how they operate, the size of those, whether or not they change from the original plans, then how they're going to operate the pits and any issues with the DDP.
Sure. I just want to say that the pits themselves, they are completely covered when the system is activated. So essentially, there's a tray. Many of you might have seen lifts on a paved parking lot that goes up two, three, four stories in a lot of urban areas. They have trays that the cars drive onto and then the car is lifted. In our particular case, we have those same trays, but we also have the space surrounding the trays, which are infilled with either plate. The design was diamond plate or just between the columns on the garage level in the pit area, there's also a blank out, which is on average about 24 inches. So that when the tray sits at grade with the rest of the garage, there is completely covered. So this, the idea that the size of it, I think the confusion lies in, you know, the size, I guess, of the tray. I will say trays can get pretty small with lifts. If you look at, I have on 607 Madison, I have four lifts over there. If you go take a tape measure to it, that tray is six foot five inches. These trays are all larger, but remember, they have space on either side, which there's maybe a two-inch curb up that when you open the door, you get out, you can, you can walk on that, whether it's a diamond plate or again, there's infill areas between the columns. So none of the garage surface area technically, when all the garage equipment is activated, creates any less space or any openings when everything is at grade. Our intention now to utilize the existing equipment that we did purchase that came from China was to deactivate the lower tray and just have one stationary tray at grade and now have the upper tray come down over the grade tray and that's how you feed vehicles in and out. But it does not create openings, we don't have less surface area when everything is put in place. I hope that explains a little bit about the system. Ideally, when we were going to look for a three level, then we would have activated the lower tray and the lower tray would have come up to grade and the grade tray, which we have, would go up. And that's how you would access the lower car. So this is all valet, just I want to remind everyone. So with the two-car system, it is the two-car retrofit, we'll call it. And I've been out there with a number of different companies. I've got somewhat of an education here in trying out how to retrofit what we have currently. And there'll be some additional work we'll do with some column work with the equipment to open up the actual space leading from the drive aisle to the tray. Just that would be the entry point. But again, all the surface area is covered from the pits. You know, vying maybe an inch gap here or there, which we don't consider that to be a safety hazard.
Are any cars going to be stored in those pits?
No cars will be stored in the pits. We're going back to the original plan where everything was a two-car lift. However, where there are pits, we already have the supports that go down into the pits that support the grade trays and obviously the level above. We have some equipment, mechanisms down there that activate the car lift system, but no car will be stored in the pit. It'll just, as I described earlier, you have a grade, now I got to deactivate the lower one. We have one fixed and then the upper one comes down over it.
And you've had conversations with the DDP relative to those pits, am I correct?
Yes.
And one of the conversations that you had with the DDP?
Well, I was hoping to get an email.
You're asking for hearsay, but who, I get, technical rules don't apply. Who did you have the conversations with?
I spoke with the commissioner of the DDP.
And who would that be?
I believe it's Commissioner Sean.
You would have to tell me.
Yes.
And when did that conversation, most of the conversations take place?
A week and a half ago, two weeks ago.
Give us the substance of what you discussed.
Excuse me?
Give us the substance of what you discussed.
I discussed exactly that. Is it, we were, he was, they were not in favor of storing automobiles below the flood elevation. I remind everyone that we're two feet out of the grade of the parking garages, two feet out of the flood elevation. Yes, above the flood elevation. We raised it a foot higher than required, which is probably the reason why you have a lobby that's a higher elevation and a ramp that extends a little further out in front of the building. That's part of the reason. And then we have waterproof pits or wells that the equipment was supposed to go into for the below grade car. And the conversation was, okay, we won't store any cars there. What about the wells themselves? We don't really want to fill them. We'll deactivate the lower. He's told me his daughter gets music lessons at the lake house and he knows the building and he doesn't have a problem with having support, structural supports with the equipment and the mechanisms in the well so long as the cars are not stored there.
So the issue is not the existence of pits, the issue is that cars should be stored in the pit, correct?
Yes, I believe the concern is about any claims that come down the pike in the event of inclement weather that could create a claim for something that's flooded.
Why not just fill the pits?
Because I want to use the existing equipment which came in. I don't want to have a problem with that.
So you mean the equipment came in from three levels?
Yeah, it's already, the structure, the steel structure is installed.
And that still structure goes into the pit?
Yeah, and it's, listen, if anybody comes out to the site, it's not very difficult to figure out if I deactivate the lower tray. You're not going to be able to get three cars in there. It's a pretty simple, it's not complicated.
So what happens if you get a flood in there? Where is that equipment?
Well, it's steel. So, I mean, the steel column that comes up to support the upper tray, it's a steel column. So I don't expect a big problem with water.
I thought you meant like you had bought the three-level tray already and it was in the pit. I mean, is that, is that what happened? You bought the three-level equipment?
I bought the three-level equipment.
So it's in there, right.
Correct.
So that doesn't affect it? If that floods the pit, doesn't it affect?
Doesn't affect it because if the grade one stays at grade, it's fixed and the one that's operating is the one above the elevation of the garage that goes up and down over the one at grade.
Specifically, what equipment is in those pits? Is it just a structural steel component?
It's steel, it's steel. The lower one, if you weren't there now, would have a tray in the lower one, which I have to deactivate. And there's, yeah, I mean, the lower one had hydraulic that went to it.
Motors below?
Excuse me?
Level of the garage?
I'm sorry.
Are there, are there any motors or?
It's a hydraulic, like.
Are you talking about structural steel elements, columns? Or are you talking about hydraulic equipment, electric motors or something like?
There's steel columns in the pits that would support the trays.
And that's the only equipment that you have below grade of the garage?
It's hydraulics.
The hydraulics, yeah.
Yeah, but it's just hydraulics for that lower tray. Doesn't affect the upper tray, the hydraulics?
It, 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 just for the lower tray.
I think he's asking if there's going to be any electrical equipment.
Below the flood elevation? Not, not to my knowledge.
So the only thing that you have below grade are support columns for this, for these stackers?
Support columns.
Hydraulic equipment.
Hydraulic equipment.
Right.
Okay. And. I don't want to get into the design of it, but would that fit within the two-foot space between the garage floor and the elevation, the flood elevation established by a DDP?
Would what fit?
Your hydraulic equipment, that is.
No, probably not.
But either way, correct me if I'm wrong, would DDP have to approve it no matter what? Whether it's five feet below or two feet below, DDP would have to approve that these hydraulics can be below grade.
Yes, I, well, when you say approve, I was just going to get an email if it was okay. I was hoping to get something in writing before today's meeting, but yes.
Well, their email that we're expecting, the opinion that we got from the DDP is that as long as you don't store cars down there, you're fine. That the equipment can be down there, you just can't store cars.
You know, so there's a hole with the DDP, and I've had this conversation with some professionals to sit, is the definition of what the well space is. You know, they have elevator pits that are allowed in below flood elevation, that it currently exists and how it was defined and how it should be defined. Or, you know, everybody has a different difference of opinion, I guess, of what is, then there's an enclosure, you know, enclosure, four walls, four sides, whatever. You know, that has a different definition with the DDP. I think my take on it, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth at the DDP, but I think eliminating the vehicle, they are more in tune to edge towards a mechanical pit because a car, I guess in their view, in that it goes below the flood elevation is not acting like a mechanical pit. But if I take the car out and I have the equipment still there, I think they edge again towards that definition of a mechanical pit. And a mechanical pit, just so you know, like an elevator, can be below the flood elevation.
How many of these, how many of these do we have? The two, the three stackers, how many do we have? Can you?
Twenty.
You got about twenty?
Five.
Twenty-five, and so the intention, just so that I can get clarity.
Wait, let me just, I have 12, I'm less, 88. I used to do this math, so that's 78, 76, 76 divided by two is. I used to do this math, so that's 78, 76, 76 divided by two is, that's what I've got. Thirty-eight. That's what I have, sorry.
So you have, you have 38. So the intention?
Thirty-eight.
Let me, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'd like to understand, is that, that at this point, you're going to use them as a two-stacker?
Correct.
And everything else will be parked, just regular parking on, on level?
No, no, I'll, the other ones, so those are the ones with pits, because not all of our design at that location had pits. Some were at grade, parking grade, and they were just two-level.
Okay.
So everything, and the original plan that we submitted that got approved, everything was a two-level stacker at the garage elevation. So we had some at the lower, in the flood plane that got approved, right? And we got that approved with our CAFRA permit and our flood elevation permit. Those, we're going back to that. The only difference being is those 38 pits will now have deactivated lower trays and will not be operating the lower tray.
They'll be adding as a two-level stacker.
Correct. But, but every space, to be fair, is two based on the original approval. That's what we're going back to.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions on that or clarification?
Can I answer a question on the balcony lights?
Going back, going back to the original approval. You say the DEP approved 38 pits to?
No, I did not say that. The DEP approved stackers and parking, I should say parking, in the flood elevation that was in the ramp area coming up into the main elevation of the garage. That all got approved.
So you had nothing below?
I had no pits, no mechanical pits. At the time, I got my CAFRA permit.
And now you need the pits because of the design of the?
I don't need the pits right now, technically, because I'm eliminating the lower thing. I obviously spent money on a pit I don't need, but I'm just trying to utilize the equipment that's currently installed.
Well, what I'm asking is, do you need those pits for that equipment? Or if, if that?
Yes, I need those pits for that equipment because the structure to the existing two-story lifts are in place right now. So that steel support goes down into the pit, it's anchored into the base of the pit and comes up to the grade and one level above grade for a two-stacker.
Do you want to talk about the, the widths and the lengths? Because that was Mr. Sackman.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if you just took the measurements of all those openings as a scale plan, those, that's what my point was, is that, you know, the trays are, are more than sufficient enough, but there's other space beyond the trays that these sit on. I think the board's getting information like the width of these trays and assuming that's the width of the space, and that's just not accurate.
Want to talk about the aisle parking and all that? Like the aisle?
Well, I wasn't parking anything in the aisle, the 88 spaces. And I, I think the narrow point of 19 and a half feet is between the lowest of the columns. I just want to be clear on that, too. And that's on the, the east section of the garage.
That's not the space between the stackers, am I correct? It's between the columns.
It's between the columns, not the stackers, correct.
So I'm assuming we're going to go through the, the reports for that information?
I'm not going through the reports. I have separate questions just for Mr. Sackman.
Okay, that's fine.
These are architecture and engineers, so the reports I'll deal with separately. You know, there are issues that you want to hear, that's what we're going through. In terms of the balcony lights that come down, they're at 4,000 Kelvin. Anything we can do to reduce the temperature of those lights?
Yes, we, we have film, by the way, so even with the, the lights on the stairs going up, because we looked at that, there was, there was a number of fixtures, including those balcony fixtures, which is difficult to get in 2,700 Kelvin. So we, they're little, flat little lights. And so we, we researched in getting like a 3M film, which you can just put right over it. Those lights also were dimmable on the balcony, so we could fix the dimmer and drop them down a little if it was too bright, even at a different, different Kelvin. But our quick solution to deal with some of the white light, because we were limited in some of the fixtures, was to get this film. So we do have the film, it's accessible, it's not a big expense, and we could certainly implement that on the balcony lights.
Where are the balcony lights? Have they fixed them?
Yeah, they're, they're under, yeah, they're right under the balcony. So, so can I grab?
Soften them?
Yeah.
The purpose of lighting the balcony below?
Just to light the balcony below, correct. And the only, the only balcony, obviously, that doesn't have a down light is the top ones, right? So then they have a centered wall-mounted light that shines down onto their balcony. The other ones, we, we provided light underneath the balcony from, I mean, under, from the balcony above.
Yeah, but what is it, just like a dome light or down?
It's just a, we have the cut sheet, Chris, Chris had the cut sheet here, but it's just a very flat light. It's, you know, the thing about lighting, I'll just say, going out there with the lights on makes all, I listen to engineers, I listen to, I've had a lot of things over the years. I find engineers over-engineer lighting personally, it's just my experience. I always like to visually see it. And I was very surprised, the amount of light, when I put the wall packs on, those that he's got on there right now with the B1s, it really is a lot of light. But, you know, it's on the plans, we'll do it, we'll certainly put it on if that's what the board's looking for. The film though, I have, so I can, I can, it's actually pretty, as I said earlier, pretty inexpensive way to solve the Kelvin problem, because Kelvin's difficult to get 2,700. I know it's a standard here, but it's, a lot of fixtures are limited. But, so that was our solution with that, if it became an issue.
There's questions about the right-of-way, how it was built in the right-of-way and what transpired to change the plans. Can we trust that?
Sure. First of all, what I wanted to say earlier is I want to apologize to this board. I want to apologize to the professionals and the people working for the city here and involved. And, you know, there was, I just was in the interesting, I think we mentioned earlier at the beginning of this process in September, this was a COVID project. I've been in this, this city for 22 years and I have not been ever in any project in a situation like I was in, sitting with a building that was not enclosed, weather, open to the weather and trying to figure out how to keep going when a lot of things were shut. Municipalities were shut, certainly subcontractors were not showing up, materials were difficult, which I know many of us all know. So hopefully, my prior applications and things that I'm doing, you'll realize this has just never happened in this city, but I can appreciate everybody's concern with this application. And I, I just want to say, so, so there were periods during this that we came to make a submission. And I think we, we briefly outlined that, that was back in November, December of 2020. That was February or March of this year. Some of these got kicked off, but many of these things were looking, we were looking to address some of the changes that were here. I heard you talk to the civil engineer and, and I understand, trying to get answers, why did this happen? This happened for a lot of reasons. It happened because, you know, I can't answer all the specifics. The gentleman that was spearheading this for our company left and went down to Florida. So I don't have all the answers as exactly why maybe things weren't done or submitted earlier. We did make a number of submissions, though, and we were looking to address a number of things that unfortunately didn't happen. So I just want to apologize from, from that and your time and everybody's energy in regards to this application. As far as ownership involvement of why or certain things were done with the site plan, I did mention that, I think this just died.
My initial? Sounds like it.
Oh, we timed out? Is that better? Oh, there we're back, okay. We did raise the, the elevation of the inside went up a foot. We looked at the site way back when and, and we, we saw that our third of the ramp was located in a separate entrance inside the lobby level. And the decision was made a while back, a while back could be a year and a half, to utilize more of the interior space for amenities for the residents. We were obviously limited on the footprint, trying to provide parking of how much additional space there would be available for resident amenity. And that culminated into the fact that we had the opportunity to create one entrance where both handicap and non-handicap residents could access the same door. The thought was, let's see if we could, let's look to design the ramp on the exterior of the building as opposed to have a third of it inside and two-thirds of it outside. The, you'll see, you can see that was on the, the plan before, we do have some of our, our building is set back. So there's a section, we could have put the first leg and the long leg of the ramp completely on our property. If we did that, that would have eliminated green space between the ramp and the building. We would have had a concrete ramp running approximately 45, 50 feet right up against the brick of the face of the building. And it wouldn't align with the stoops, it didn't align with the building to the east of us. If you look at our, if you're ever up on those stoops and you look, we took a, say, plane, the building next to us, Moonstruck has three levels of decks that protrude out from the face of their building, which I, I don't, I investigated, I don't know if that was originally sold to them by the city because I don't know the history behind it, but the old tax records has that originally as a 50 by 100 lot and its utilization is greater than that today. So green space up against the building was the reason we pulled the ramp off and keeping it in line symmetrically with the stoops and the building line of our adjacent property owner. That was some of the thought that went into it. And as well as having the, the single entrance and creating a gym, where we could create the additional amenity space inside, take away the one-third ramp inside and create a gym for the residents. That was the thought. The far as the, the planner goes, it was just verticality. We actually has high ceilings on the, on the garage. So we were just looking to do verticality with, with, with green. That was all, to tier it. It was nothing more than a landscape design that we thought could, could soften the, the brick verticality. And then I think we have two and a half feet by 25 that extend out to the west of the main door. And that was just, again, to keep everything symmetrical in line with the ramp that pulled off with the stoops and with the building. Everything was just trying to be lined up. That was the rationale behind it.
I understand, you know, there may be rationale for changes. I'm still perplexed, how you built it without asking for approval first?
We had an application in. We wanted to.
It's all different.
But we, we couldn't get before the board.
But that doesn't give you the right to build it.
We're here. If it's something that we can't, if it's something that the city is, is against, we will have to take it out. I'm just, you know, this project is a four-year project.
I understand.
It's not a, it wasn't an 18-month project, unfortunately.
I understand that. But I guess where I come from, you know, where your company comes from, I just don't understand building things without approval.
Well, I've, as I mentioned before, this isn't something I've ever done. As I mentioned before, I've never been in a pandemic where everything was shut down. I mean, I, my, you know, not for, not for nothing, but I didn't get PPP on a development site. I was paying interest, so I had to figure out how to enclose and get the building finished. That's what happened.
Those are reasons, not excuses.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's an excuse. I'm just telling you the reason why, the rationale behind what happened.
Did you, did you say that you tried to make an application to the planning board?
December of 2020. It was either November or December of 2020. I put in for the facade. It got kicked back.
What happened?
It got kicked back.
What does that mean, that it got kicked back?
I mean.
There, there are issues in terms of getting applications deemed complete.
Right.
Moving them forward, significant issues. Even on this one, I mean, this was originally submitted in March of this year, early March. It took eight or nine months to get before the board. Getting, getting the applications deemed committed is an entirely different issue that frankly, I think the board's going to have to address at some point.
But once you get, once we get all of our, all of the paperwork that is, or the documentation that is required, once that's done and once it's deemed complete, then getting on the schedule of the planning board is relatively simple.
I mean, we were having meetings and discussions.
We were having meetings all along.
I'm not disputing getting before the board once it's deemed complete, but what has to be, what you have to go through to get an application deemed complete is a whole different discussion.
Yes, it is, and that those are the rules that we have.
Well, frankly, I think the procedure, you may want to consider changing the procedure in how the applications come in to review and deem complete.
And that's, it's a, that's a whole different discussion on whether something is complete or not. Our professionals would have to decide that as well as the city. So that's a procedural.
Your professionals don't decide that.
We would, I don't think that this is the place for that discussion.
But just so, your professionals don't decide completely.
I understand that they don't, but there are things that our professionals need, therefore they are on the checklist.
Oh, I agree. I'm not, oh, I'm not disputing.
So if they're not provided, we can't deem it complete.
I'm not disputing.
So, okay. Anything else from Mr. Sackman?
That's all I have.
Okay. So have we spoken about the whole right-of-way situation? Are we done with that?
No. Clearly, if there's, if there's proposals to continue further encroaching to the right-of-way, the board has to decide whether or not you're going to approve that. If you do, then it has to be approved by the mayor council.
Okay, so then, with the logical.
All of the amendments that have been requested have to be approved by the board.
Understood. But from what I can see and from the initial discussion by the engineer, or I'm not sure if it was you, Mr. Sackman, I think it was the engineer, there were numerous places where the right-of-way encroachment increased, numerous places.
That's true.
So, and not insignificant in any of them. And I thought perhaps, not correctly, that someone would talk to, well, why do we need that wall planter that goes into the right-of-way? Why do we need that extra space from the left side of the, the door to be in the right-of-way? So there's a lot of right-of-way here that, is it necessary? I'm not, I'm not hearing anything from anyone about.
Well, I think, well, I mean, the board's going to have to make that decision. I, 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 I understand that. I will say, we're, we have a planner, we have a ramp. There's more green space in front of this building than anywhere in the central business district on Lake. 100% of the right-of-way is impervious and filled in on the adjacent building to the west, the Beer Garden. You have a garbage enclosure, that's six-feet-tall enclosure that comes right out to the sidewalk on the building directly to the west in the Beer Garden. There is also the Moonstruck, which if you go there, again, I don't know the history behind how the land was transferred, but at some point, I would imagine that right-of-way extended east through the Moonstruck and somewhere that was tendered over to them and they built decks south, on their south elevation into what was probably a prior right-of-way. If I look at everything here, and I don't know, I mean, as, as, I assume everybody in the board's gone past the building, you've seen the landscaping, there's a lot of green in front of this building. The planner is just another thing with green, it's just a way to get.
This is not your place to plant.
Excuse me?
It's not your place to plant on the right-of-way of the city. So yes, I appreciate the fact of what.
I'm only saying, I'm only, I'm only asking, listen, I don't know, you know, there was a right-of-way grant, encroachment granted initially. If the board deems that they don't like this, they, they think it's not acceptable. If the board deems that they don't like this, they, they think it's not acceptable, they think it's a detriment to the community, and, you know, wants me to do something different, I guess I, I have to do it. So, I'm, but I'm, my, my position is, it's really nice, and it's, it's not a detriment to the community. I think it's an enhancement aesthetically, is my personal opinion, but, you know, if, if I'm, if that's not the case and the board doesn't feel that way, then, you know, I'm just trying to come to a solution. As I mentioned, the, the ramp, I could push the ramp back up against the building. I'd prefer not to because you kill green space between a concrete ramp and a brick elevation, but, you know, I mean, you're talking about two and a half these feet extended out from the, the, the left side of the entryway, the west side of that, that, what do you want, the terrace out front of the main lobby, you know, that, I guess I could take two and a half feet off, if the planner, I could cut the planner back two and a half feet. I don't know that that is, makes a, that has significant aesthetic changes other than it's a different, I, I recognize it's different than what was granted in the original right-of-way from the city. I, I certainly agree with that. But I, I mean, I think it's beautiful if you go out to the site.
So, whereas right now, you have three feet that's paved from the curb, am I correct? And then you have an additional five feet of sidewalk, am I correct? It's eight feet, right? And that, am I correct, you have eight feet until you start planting, am I correct?
Yes.
And then, if you remove that green space, all you would have then is just regular concrete towards where you began or begin your planting, am I correct?
Well, if somebody wanted to concrete the right-of-way, yeah.
But right now, with what you planted, it lines up the sidewalk and the plantings with the Moonstruck building next door, am I correct?
Well, the Moonstruck building next door has decks into, into the front of their space.
And that comes right out to where that sidewalk is.
I mean, listen, you know, part of the, I, I don't know how interested the city is, but I mean, you know, certainly irrigating this, I mean, the intention was to maintain it and, and keep it in, in good order. I just think it's, it's a beautification overall. I understand it's different from the original approval, but I do think it's a beautification of, of space.
The issue before the board is you have to decide if you agree with the other. And we recognize that if you don't, we have to go back to whatever the board has decided, and if we do, we have to go back and pray the mayor and council. We wanted to get a right-of-way easement similar to what we did previous.
So the right-of-way easement that you received, and this is tech, this is, to understand, so you've received a certain right-of-way easement. Why would you have to go back to the council again if you already have it?
Because if-
No, if it changes.
No, 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 let's say, let's say, let's, let's just play this out. If the board says, you must go back to the original right-of-way approval.
Well, there we go.
Then you don't have to go back to the, you don't have to go back to council, and you just, then you, would you have to come back to us to show us, well, what are you gonna do? Or how does that work? I don't understand that part.
Well, we have to ensure that what is going to be constructed is in accordance with the plans that were previously approved. So if you were-
Well, there will, there, well, I just wanna be clear.
No, we, we would still have to have post-approval compliance with resolution conditions.
Correct, okay.
They're still, they're, they're still out there.
Right.
And they still exist and they're still out, until such times as you change them. So, insight along with various city construction officials would follow that original resolution of approval if you do not approve the amendments that have been requested. And assuming you have the right-of-way agreement with the city for the originally approved, approved encroachments, is that correct? That was submitted, and I believe this was passed in two thousand and nine. So the answer's yes.
Yeah, but that would have to be altered, even, even if the encroachment, yeah, I could reduce the encroachment to, to the same amount of encroachment, but the configuration be a little different.
Assuming the board grants you an alteration of the configuration, then that, that right-of-way easement agreement would still be in effect. If it's modified by anything the board does, you have to go back to the mayor and council to seek modification and approval.
All right, is that the-
The, the original plan where you moved the ramp away from the building and put two and a half feet of planting, was the original plan flush to the building?
I believe so.
I don't wanna guess on that.
Okay, and then I just go back as far as like, the plantings, did you say you were gonna have a landscape engineer?
Landscape architect, yes.
Landscape architect, okay, just because you removed plantings on the rear of the building, so as much as you're saying they're so pretty in the front, why'd you remove them in the back?
Excuse me? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You removed plantings on the rear of the building, so as much as we're saying, well, it looks so pretty and aesthetic in the front, and we all want more plantings and less pervious or anything, why did you remove the plantings okay in the back?
Well, the, the planting on the back was never on, first of all, it's, it's a ten-foot walkway and it's, there's a, I wanna say, a twelve-foot wall in the rear property line of this building, and then there's another seventeen-foot wall, which is the rear of the commercial at five fifty Cookman. So there's two walls, wouldn't really grow that well, so I ended up, I ended up putting in ivy up there and hoping ivy would grow up the back.
But a deviation from what was approved.
Yeah, I don't know that there was much planning back there, but yes.
Well, your civil engineer stated is one of the things that was changed.
Yes, yes, it has.
To answer your question, it was flush up there, is it open?
Thank you. And we liked it, we approved it.
I understand.
All right, so we, any other questions from the board members of this, are you, is Mr. Sackman finished?
Unless the board-
Unless, okay, any, any other questions from the board of Mr. Sackman?
One thing I do wanna bring up, when the engineer testified, did you open it up to the public?
I did.
Yes, there were no questions.
I did, there were no questions. Any questions from our professionals to Mr. Sackman?
Would the change to the trash room, will it still be able to hold the same amount of material as it had before?
Yes.
And you have a private hauler that's gonna deal with this, am I correct?
Yes.
And then you can control the days and every time during the week that the hauler comes, but for recycling the trash, am I correct?
Anything else?
I actually have a question about the gym.
Go ahead.
So, do, do we have a requirement that it's gonna be, you know, why are many of these gyms, we can, we can do them from the street? Do we have a, is that something that has to be cleared or not?
No, but we do encourage there be, um-
Transparency.
Street, you know, street level portions of buildings be, you know, kind of visible to the, from the street, to the sidewalk, and provides, you know, engagement, visual activity.
So there's just more light, you know, some of it, just more light pouring out.
I mean, it's also above your head level if you're looking at sidewalks.
Well, especially with that facade, it's so big and blank.
Any other questions from our professionals? Okay, any questions from the public to Mr. Sackman about what was testified? All right, can we, do you mind taking five minutes, please?
Move, take a five minute break.
Yeah, moving to take a five minute break?
Motion to approve.
And Mr. Henry Secondin?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, all right. I will now take attendance. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Eric Galfo.
Here.
Daniel Shanameo. Vice Chair Rick Lambert.
Here.
Chair Rowan Barbe Karzak.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Karas?
Please raise your right hand. If I'm describing testimony about the given matter, you cheat the whole truth for nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it as well.
David Businelli, D-A-V-I-D, B-U-S-I-N-E-L-L-I.
Well, he already was-
Yes, he's been sworn in. He was previously qualified as an architect.
David, what are, first, you're familiar with this project, am I correct?
Yes, I am.
Provided, testified on this application before, am I correct?
Yes.
And you recently provided revised plans rela-, or helped draft revised plans relative to this application, am I correct?
Yes.
You're familiar with those plans?
Yes.
Are those the plans that are up on the board?
Yes, they are.
What I wanna do is mark those, mark those plans, these seven for identification. Can you please give me the last revision date on those plans?
Let me just check that. I believe it was December seventh, but I'm confirming, confirming, uh, December eighth of this year, twenty-two.
What I want you to do is go through those plans and discuss and point out the revisions that were made versus the original plans and any prior plans presented in this application.
Sure, well, let's start off with the rear of the building. We did coordination between the civil engineering site plan and this particular plan to, to capture as much as is feasible. We sold one plan, let me take present, civil engineering plan, control much of the site work, but we have indicated the change in the ramp to the rear west corner and the rear of the building. We have indicated in the front of the building, the stop, painted stop sign on the entry ramp exterior and the stop bar. We have indicated the stop sign, the electrical equipment, that takes care of the front west, and we have indicated the exterior lighting, both on all sides of the building, in coordination with the civil engineering plan. On the interior of the building, we have indicated the two car stackers on the ramp. We have coordinated with the civil plan to indicate that there were, to be flood signs located on the walls, the, the west and east wall of the garage at the entry, with a detail of the flood sign indicated. We have indicated the color of the roll-up door to the trash room to be black anodized. We have indicated the color of the flood vents in the main garage door to be black. And we have indicated all of the, the stackers to be, to cars with a total number of parking spaces noted as eighty-eight. That takes care of the first floor. On the, the law roof plan, we revised the calculations which are indicated here, and we are at seventeen point forty-seven percent, which is less than the maximal level of twenty percent. We have also indicated a typical that there is an exterior light on the, at the doors, at the roof decks of the individual pop-ups. And as for the elevation, the front elevation, we've got, again, in coordination, we've got the flood vents in the main garage door with the color black. We've noted that the roll-up door will be black anodized. We have a note indicating that there is a recessed LED light under each balcony. We have indicated the wall-mounted lights, and they are very small, they're not big lights, but they are on the elevation above the main garage door. We have indicated the, the other two lights above the roll-up doors of the trash area and above the ramp on the main front wall. And we've indicated with a note, the recessed LEDs in the stoffel above the main entry. Also, the elevation has and continues to indicate the difference in the facade materials since the, from, in the deviation from the original approval.
Let's go through that.
Sure. The carbon facade materials are fiber cement panels. Nijia is the manufacturer. They are in a wood tone and a white. And the, the brick along the base is a charcoal clay coat by Glengarry, and it's a thin brick product, and you can see when you go by the building, it's got a bit of a sheen to it, but is, it is a very nice, very nice brick.
What about the balconies?
The balconies have glass rails. The windows were originally, were changed from the original configuration, which were larger, with divided lights to smaller and sliders. The doors, which were previously in-swing from the balcony, are now a sliding glass door. The frames are black, and the parapet wall, the previous approval had areas that intermix solid parapet wall with, with areas of railing, and now the parapet wall is in fact solid.
I just wanna go to the flood vents. Can you identify where the flood vents are in front of the building?
Yes, they are in the garage door, right here, this-
And how many flood vents do we have?
There are five, though the note says four, there are in fact five.
All right, going back to the facade now.
Yes.
Why don't you identify the colors on the building that are on there as well?
Yeah, it's, they are white, there's white panels, and the, it's a redwood color also.
Go on to the roof area.
Yes.
Indicate the revisions that were made up on top in terms of the general amenities
The, there are decks available for the pop-ups. I believe previously the approval was for a common shared area, if I'm not mistaken. That is no longer the case, there are roof decks for each of the apartments up there. The mechanical systems were changed to multi-split VRF system, which are much more smaller, and you could, which you could see right here.
Are they visible anywhere from the street?
They are not, they're about three by three, by about twelve inches wide.
And the original approval had roof, wall, AC units, which grows out, were visible from the front facade, am I correct?
That's correct.
With this design utilization, these mini-split, is that eliminated?
That was in fact eliminated. Yes, the, so the, the mechanical system is certainly not visible from, from the street. This is a, this is a very highly efficient system. It's all electric, so eliminated any gas piping to the roof except for a single HVAC unit which supplies the hallways, which is located right here.
Again, not visible from the street.
Not visible from the street at all.
What I wanna do is, I wanna just go back to the garage for a minute.
Sure.
All right, I just want you to provide the measurements to the board of the parking stall depth and width.
Sure.
Just to work through.
The, let me just pull it up. Many of the stackers are, and this is the physical dimension of the piece of equipment, right, seven foot seven by eighteen foot six and a half. So those are the dimensions of the physical equipment, and because this is a self-park, and not a self-parking arrangement, it's valet, the cars fit easily on those, those pieces of equipment. There are, as Sackman testified, there is actually more space because there's, there's gaps between the equipment, which are, are filled with metal plates. So, again, if it was self-parking, you'd have a different, a different kind of width-to-depth ratio. In terms of the aisle widths, they vary based on proximity of the equipment to the structural columns. So you can see here, there's a twenty-one foot ten, a dimension from face of column enclosure to the actual stacker pit. On the east side, this dimension, face of column enclosure to pit is twenty feet, and here, because there are two columns in the grid, column face to column face is nineteen foot four. And again, because this is not a self-parking where you're gonna have two-way traffic, because it is a valet, you know, the grid, you know, is, is, you don't have that issue with, with two cars passing by.
So you're not, you wouldn't have the conflict that ordinarily you would have- So you're not, you wouldn't have the conflict that ordinarily you would have had if it was self-park, am I correct?
That's correct.
The garage door?
Yes.
All right. The original approval had two garage doors, am I correct?
That's right.
And that was eliminated?
It was, it's a single eighteen-foot wide door, eighteen foot by eight foot high.
And the bike room was increased in size, am I correct?
That is correct.
And there was also an exterior door to provide for access from the exterior for that bike room, am I correct?
That is correct, right here.
Any other revisions on plans?
Uh, no.
What I'd like to do is go through the reports then. And what I'm going to do is start with the four, which is the insight report that has a date of December nine of twenty twenty-two. You've already addressed on page two, comment number one with regards to mechanical equipment on the roof, whether or not it's visible from the street, am I correct?
Yes.
Terms of signage, can you address signage?
The signage on the building is quite minimal and is really limited to the little address sign above the frontal. Right here.
Okay, and that's the extent of signage on the building?
That's the extent, yes.
Number four, for the revised plans, testimony was requested with regard to demonstration at the architectural elements. Shows during construction are set up to be pleased and compatible with other buildings in the immediate redevelopment area. Can you comment on that?
Sure. The, if you look at the facade of the building and you look at the two adjacent buildings, the Beer Garden and, and Moonstruck, while the original approval, I believe, had brick panels and gray fiber cement, correctly if I'm, if I'm mistaken about that, these colors, even though the material is not brick, we'll be only a brick base, but the main facade of the building, the body of the building, is the redwood fiber cement panels and the white Nijihah fiber cement panels. The color of the redwood is certainly compatible with the color of the brick on the Beer Garden. The white panels are compatible with the materials on Moonstruck. The white panels are also, I don't want, well, how do I put this? They hang with the white signage that's painted on the Beer Garden. In terms of the fenestration, rather than mimicking or trying to go closer to the industrial-type steel windows on the Beer Garden, the current fenestration is more residential in scale and closer in scale to what you see on, on Moonstruck. In terms of the configuration of the windows being sliders, they only, the sliders only open four inches to allow for venting, so there's guards, so there's safety. The sliding glass door was chosen to avoid issues with wind when you have an in-swing door. If you have an in-swing door, the wind can blow it open, you have a large opening when you have windy conditions, conditions up high, a slider eliminates those concerns.
Going, continuing on, I want to take you to, you know, the color rendering.
We have photos.
Yeah, I believe we introduced those previously. Why don't we?
Do you need a little, so, should I just hold them?
What I'm going to do, just to make sure that we have these properly identified, I know there were photos of the outside right-of-way that were identified as A2. I believe these are, yeah, these are A2. All right, you've taken a look at what's been marked as A2 for identification. Why don't we take a look and? All right, we actually have two, I believe. This one was already identified in our right-of-way as our A2 for identification. Why don't you go through this a little bit, then we'll continue on with the others.
Sure. Well, you can see the ramp configuration. And going by what previous testimony was about the configuration of the ramp, you can see how by pulling the ramp forward and rotating, so that was so bleak at an angle towards the angle of the street line, the right of way, right? It creates this dynamic space. So you have impervious surface, I mean, you have pervious surface, you have greenery, and you have a ramp that is not static. So you want, when you design a building, the motion that you could, that would appear in the building, the vet, so it's not static. The typical switchback ramp, while functional, this is, this is a better way of doing it. I know that there's issues with the right-of-way, but the decision that was made from an aesthetic standpoint, from an access standpoint, worked by paint as an art. The colors, you can see how the brick, the white and the redwood are very, very good together. Opposite sides of the color wheel, which is what you want to see in color, and sometimes when it's close on the color wheel, it works. Black window frames, certainly the Beer Garden window frames are black, those old industrial steel windows are, most part black. These are contemporary, and they're sheen, but they are still black. And the overall fenestration rhythm is of a more, of a smaller residential scale than the previous version.
So previously, the ramp was flush against that wall, then?
Right, right. It would have been, you know, you're static, you go up, you make the two ninety-degree, a ninety-degree turn, and another ninety-degree turn on the ramp, on the landing, and then you head back up. You know, and then from an access standpoint, where you have the main entrance, right, from the stairs up, and you're, you're not in a wheelchair or on crutches, let's say, or otherwise able to walk without a problem, you're going in. But if you're not, you're kind of limited to the one entrance. So this way, from a pure access standpoint, everybody gets to enter into the main entrance.
What I want to show you is what I've just marked as A8 for identification and say, if you're looking directly at the entire facade of the building, am I correct, you have Moonstruck to the right and then Beer Garden to the left?
That's correct.
Right, why don't you identify this further?
Right, so here we see a shot of the building, which is a really rich shot. You can see the windows here on Moonstruck. You're triple-cased, especially this guy right here in that corner. Here you have a triple slot. Look at the difference in scale. Now, this is so we're hanging with the lower scale of, of Moonstruck. The colors, looking against the blue sky, are pretty stunning when you look at it. You go out there on a clear blue day, wow. And you look at it from the bridge across the lake, it looks fantastic. The white, compatible with Moonstruck. The redwood, compatible with the brick of the Beer Garden. The white hangs with the lettering.
What's in the, the pop-ups?
The pop-ups, that's, that's, is that standing seam or is that gliss? It's not standing seam.
Well, no, they're double-tubed, they're dual-tubed units up there or?
Yeah, yeah, they have a little, it's like a little mezzanine. You go up there.
And what's the cladding on that?
No, that's gray fiber cement. And these, and this is standing seam.
Lastly, have you take a look at what I've gone to mark as a non-identification? If you take a look at this one?
Yep. No, this is the straight-on, more detailed shot, okay? Well, like I said, this gives a nice aerial, you can see how the setup of the ramp, the planting, the material of the facade, and how there's a single access point work towards making this a composed, a very well-composed facade.
And the sidewalk follows the entire line.
Yeah, yeah, that's the other point, thank you. It follows the line all the way up.
I just don't understand the, the concept of why the ramp is angled out instead of being straight against the, just designed, just aesthetic?
Yeah, it gives, it gives a, it creates a dynamic space between the legs of the ramp. Normally, like, we've all done up these ramps at a switchback. You go back and forth. Like I said, you go up, two ninety-degree turns, and you're, you know, and you're, and you're going back up straight. And that would have been hugging the facade. This one was pulled off of the facade, you could say, right? And then with the angles, this, this angle approaches obliquely, the angle of leg end, so you're going at it like this.
And if you pulled it in more like it would, you'd be less in the right-of-way, right?
We'd be less in the right-of-way, but it would be boring. This is a much more interesting session.
You're creating that weird little triangular space in between the two ramps, which seems like just useless dead space.
But it's not dead space, it closes point.
But that's not gonna, I mean, that's, that's gonna collect trash and it's just, I mean, it seems like just a useless space. I mean, just simply useless. I don't even see the purpose of that. I don't see the purpose of why that, it just looks awkward having that leg just kicked out from the ramp. I don't, I don't get the whole dynamic thing, it just looks awkward.
And you don't create any more planting. If you pulled it in, you would have some planting in a different spot.
Well, again, these, these are the thoughts that go through, well, you have a plantings between the two legs.
I understand, if you pulled it in, you're not planting on the other side.
I just have a general, I just have a general question.
Yeah, but I'm not going to have a discussion between four.
I just have a general question about the entire front of the building. Why was it changed?
Well, the material changes were necessitated by, as Mr. Sackman testified, the issues with pandemic and availability of materials. I can't speak to the exact lead times and supply chain issues, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the reasons for the change of materials. The change of material dictated a change in the facade design from the original.
Who changed the ramp?
I, well, I, that wasn't the architectural decision. I believe that was landscape and all.
Were you the original architect?
No, I'm, no, I'm standing here for Jose Carvajal.
Okay, just because five minutes ago, you said the decisions were made for aesthetic. So I assume that, that wasn't made, it was, you said it, it was made for aesthetic. So the materials of the original application, you're saying weren't available. Prove that to me.
Well, I, I can't prove that to you, that would be Mr. Sackman, but the, the aesthetics were dictated by availability. In other words, it wasn't just aesthetics, it was the availability of the material that you originally specified.
I don't want you to characterize his testimony. Don't tell me what he said. That's what you're saying.
Okay.
Mr. Sackman, if need be, we can recall.
We can call, I believe he's provided testimony.
I don't want you to say what he said.
No, I understand that, but I believe he's provided testimony, we can call.
No, no, I agree, I agree. Whatever Mr. Sackman said, he said. He gave an explanation, but I don't need you to tell us what he said.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry. So you were involved as the architect to redraw this?
I, I was brought in to, to document the, and capture the as-bills.
The revisions that were made?
Right, the revisions that were made and learn everything about the building that I could possibly could.
And those revisions were made by the, the man you'd mentioned before, the other architect?
Jose Carvajal. He was the original architect.
And were the revisions made by what architect?
The, by Mr., they were updated by, to keep, just so we're clear, the original plan was Mr. Carvajal.
The plan that was approved by us?
He's the architect of record on this, all right, as we've gone through. David now is working on the revised plans, and that's what's being submitted and the changes.
But it's already been built? So somebody had to design, some architect had to design?
That was Mr. Carvajal.
Okay, so the original architect decided it was no longer aesthetically pleasing?
No, 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 no. Mr. Sackman had provided testimony that materials during the pandemic were not available, which dictated they had to change the front design of the building.
So who or was there a plan created to represent those materials or did the GC just?
No, no, there was a plan that was created, and that, that was submitted at the end of twenty twenty.
And who prepared those plans?
Mr. Carvajal.
Submitted to who?
But we've never seen them, we don't know where.
It was a site, I know, case I'm sure.
We've never seen them. Right, so the planning, we're never seeing them.
Deemed incomplete.
These as-bills are dated August twenty-one in your revision list on, on that drawing.
These are revisions, correct.
But we have never seen these.
August twenty-one is a year and a half ago.
Correct.
So the, but when was this building substantially complete?
That would be for Mr. Sackman to provide testimony, I can't testify.
Because if an as-built is produced, what you are documenting is what is built. And it says these as-bills were produced on August third, twenty twenty-one, which means at some point, the document.
Right, we initially came in and tried to submit an application in December of twenty twenty, which was six months or so before that.
And so there were periodic submissions between?
That is correct.
And all those were done by Mr. Carvajal?
Correct.
So you're not the person who decided to change the windows? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Who, do you know who did?
Well, Mr. Carvajal put them on plans, but I believe Mr. Sackman testified that he made a decision with regard to changes on the building necessitated by the availability of materials.
Not only did he change the size, he changed the style?
We, we know that. A lot's been changed, we're not disputing that. We know that. We're just coming before the board on this application for an amended approval as a result of that. We know it, there's been substantial change. We're not disputing that. We're not arguing that anymore. We're presenting it.
Can I ask one, about the ramp again? The, earlier, there was testimony that it was partly because of the desire to have people that needed the ramp to have the same access point as everybody, right? So it's, if you're using the stairs, but previously, if you use the ramp, you entered a different point?
That is correct. There was an entrance that was over on the side of the ramp, went to the stairs, went to a different outside screen.
But that, I think it still had the same entrance if it wasn't angled a little way into the ramp, right?
Well, that's true, that's true. But again, that was a design decision made back then. To me, that's one of the reasons, was to give it some interest. And, and you know, whether you agree or disagree aesthetically, you know, about, about the decision, that's, that was part of the thought process.
Continuing down with the report. Number six had to do with light, lighting, we've covered that. Seven recyclables, we've covered that. Eight parking, I think we went through that somewhere to nine, ten.
Just a second, it says, is any mezzanine-level lighting proposed? That was for the architect to answer?
You're right.
That was J?
You're right on this app. Mezzanine lighting.
Yeah, that was. In this clouded area here, there are six-inch wall sconces. Of course, they were, one of the fixtures that were on yours touched, I believe. So they're very small. What's the color temperature though? I don't know what you call it.
Are they downward facing?
They're downward facing, but they're really not visible because you can't see anything. If you stand across, you're not gonna see it.
Number seven recyclables, we've covered. Parking, eight, nine, 10, and 11, that's been covered. 12 is a two-way operation, we've covered that. Zone chart had been updated. 13, am I correct, that the zone chart was revised 19.5 feet, measurement from the limbs of the inside to the flare of the curb. Am I correct?
Yes.
And that the zoning chart will be revised?
It says, the zoning chart was updated accordingly. So the comment is, it had been updated.
No, I'm talking about 13?
Yeah, he addressed 13.
And he just addressed 13. It will be revised.
Okay, it will be revised. Okay.
Right. Number 12, the zoning chart was updated accordingly. That's the comment.
Yes, right.
Site triangles, I believe we've covered in the testimony already. Operational testimony for the proposed garage, we've covered that. The ADA plans were revised, testers provide ADA loads located in the garage, that's testified to. 18 is the FHA permit, the pink, we've covered that. And stormer 20, we've covered. Or W, we've covered. And the 23, the fence, we've covered that. I believe we hit all the items in West Mark Street before. The five is the report of CCH, updated December 9, 2022. I believe we have pretty much covered all those two.
Can we go through what we haven't, please? Because there's a lot in this report.
The street trees, we're gonna...
Yeah, there's still stuff for the landscape architect.
Landscape.
Okay, were you satisfied that all the other things were covered?
I know when we talked about the word carpet. Um...
We push the button.
Okay. And the lighting, it's the lighting. Uh, yes. So I just need the landscape architect. Yes, any questions?
I'll go for other questions.
Only question I got for Doug, just because of recent hearing, is 18-foot garage door wide enough?
That was actually, the original approval was 18-foot.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we do need new relief having to do with on 6.1. There was new relief that changes to the building that are depicted in the amended plan, as well as what has been constructed, required, designed, exceptions from these standards. So all of these are exceptions?
No, not exactly.
Like the materials of the facade, the windows?
So the windows, scale, material colors, and then that's, those would be exceptions. Technically, the material colors would not be a design exception. Those are really subjective standards within the UEC requirements. Oh, the only other thing I would say is, so the ramp, if it becomes a feature that's going to remain, as well as the other planter walls, should have a finish on them, not just the raw concrete.
No objection to that, that's fine.
I just double-check here. So then...
The board is self-confined to allow this approval.
And then carpet would be the exception.
We have no objection to finishing off that.
Can you put up the image at the ground level, but not the one from across the lane?
Is there something, Eric?
No, no, I just wanted to see it because it wasn't...
All right. One of the items that has not been mentioned, though, you did state about the white finish and the glass balconies. At sundown, going down Lake Avenue, there's glare off of that building. Onto the streets. It's just a fact. It's not whether or not I like the building or I don't like the building. When the sun is going down, it's right at those balconies that reflect off of the glass and off of the white part of the building. It's a concern of mine. I know that that wasn't mentioned in any report, but I think timing, time of day becomes an issue. But that's one person's opinion. And outside of the fact that this building is truly not what was requested, not what was approved, not even close. I'm just saying, the other part is, in my personal opinion, that it doesn't look anything like the beer garden, doesn't fit into the area. That's just my opinion. One person's opinion. One person's opinion.
I agree.
Balconies always glass?
No, they were not glass. I'm sorry, I'm testifying.
No, no, you're just recalling what was...
I'm recalling what was said. If you look on the CCH report, if you look on, Daniel, if you look on page, if you look on page five, I'm sorry, not page five. If you look on page seven, you'll see what they were gonna look like. On page seven. That's what the building was supposed to look like.
It's also two garage doors.
Right, but that, yeah. Do any other planning board members have any other questions for our architect? Anyone? No? How about our professionals? Any questions for our architect? No? Okay. Open up to the public. Does the public have any questions of the architect of anything that was testified while he's been here? No questions from the public? Okay, next witness.
Last witness, landscape architect. So please raise your hand. Swear, testimony about giving this man the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it for us.
It's Michael Dwyer, M.I.C.H.A.E.L.D.W.Y.E.R.
Who has previously testified? Dwyer, can you please give the board a picture of your qualifications?
Sure. I graduated from Rutgers University, 2006, Bachelor of Science, landscape architecture. Been practicing landscape architecture for 16 years. Currently, I'm a project manager at Bola Engineering, and I had my license since 2015 in the state of New Jersey. Correct, and it is active. And I've testified before multiple boards in the state.
I may offer him this landscape architect. Sir, I'm gonna have you take a look at a plan, a parent landscape plan relative to this property. Can you bring that up on the screen? What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna mark this. I believe we're up to A10 for identification. Take a look at what's marked as A10 for identification. Is this a plan that you prepared or essentially prepared?
Yes.
And what I want you to do is go through the plan, describe what's in there, and how it differs when you've got the vision. Why don't you go through all the landscape that you added to this plan?
Sure. So if I could state that the previously-prepared plans by Jezza Robyn, dated July 9, 2018, included 12 evergreen trees, 108 shrubs with a mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs, 250 ornamental grasses, and ground cover, excuse me, perennials. As was stated earlier, there was two entrances into the building, one ramp, and all the plantings were at great. With the proposed design, I can zoom out, as you all are aware, there's now one entrance into the building. We have the planter on the west-hand side of the plan. The ramp on the eastern side and centralized is the seating area, which is the raised platform just outside of the lobby. With this planting design, it includes six ornamental trees, 21 shrubs, a mix of evergreen and deciduous, 56 ground-covered plantings, and over 1,000 perennials. And also included in that is 74 ornamental grasses. With that, we used about 90% of the same species that was previously approved. Anything that was deviated from the original approved plans was still native plantings, which is encouraged by the city. As noted earlier, we tried to add a different type of dynamic to this, and the approach that was taken was more of a streetscape aspect. If I may state that the previous plans had more of a garden-type of style planting with the evergreens up along the building, ornamental plantings in the centralized with lower plantings closer to the sidewalk. The approach that we took here was lower plantings all along the sidewalk with street trees, and then some larger shrubs up against the building that would also provide a little bit of, you know, foundation planting. With the lower plantings, we also wanted to make sure that we were taking into consideration pedestrian vehicular visibility with that driveway. So if you, if you're looking at the plan on the western side, we have our trees kind of flanking the driveway and its ground cover beneath. Centrally located, you have the planter with some larger plantings. If I could highlight that, this would be about evergreens along the back and some smaller shrubs and ornamental grasses just in front to give it more of an elevation look and feel. And then you have the wall, and then the ground cover, and your street tree. Moving further to the east, again, it's a simplified version of what was planted out before. This would have more of an impact and a statement once the trees are flowering, as well as the ground cover. The ground cover is a semi-evergreen, which will flower throughout the year. So there will be some color to that. And the same with internally to this, between the stairs and the ramp, we have a band of ornamental grasses in that ground cover again. So when these are all kind of at their best with their color and their flowers, they will have this nice kind of banding effect. And it's a little bit more of a modern design with the approach that we took, working with the applicant.
Anything else?
That's all I have for the...
What's at the east most edge, if it's like after the ramp to the, to the east of the ramp? Is that just low plantings and ground cover?
Yes. So the hatch that you see, this is the lower plantings. To the rear, we have more of a, some taller plantings.
How tall do they get?
Three to four feet high.
The irrigation system?
I don't know if it was installed. Yes.
Can I ask, so you didn't do the original, your company did not do the original landscape plan?
No.
Was the other fellow, the other engineer, his firm?
His firm, yes. Jezza Robyn.
And are you the one that made the move, the ramp from the original design?
Yes. So we were brought on board, I guess, late 2020 to do some initial sketches and concepts, working with the applicant. Some of the items that are being brought up, you know, it wasn't our intention to deviate from any sort of easements and so forth. So it was, it was not our understanding that there was going to be an issue with modifying these. And as the architect was bringing up to the point where we were, we were trying to create something different, and, you know, following the process of sketch, concept, coming up to either administrative approval or back to the board and so forth. So we were working with the applicant to achieve all this and the vision that they had for the space outside of the building.
So was it your idea or the applicant's about this angled ramp now?
It was collaboration. We were trying to add the dynamic to the space as opposed to, you know, just a big blocky ramp and give it a little bit more of an appeal from the street.
So did you have any discussions about right-of-way when you were making these designs?
I did not, no.
But yet, I see, I believe that the right-of-way is clearly denoted on your plan. Is that true or no?
The property line is here, yes.
So by that, you know what the right-of-way is? No? I'm just guessing, because I'm certainly not a landscape architect.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Are there any other changes to the landscape or to the plan other than what you've addressed so far?
Other than the rear landscaping that was not installed or located on this plan.
And you've heard testimony provided with regards to that, am I correct?
Yes.
It wasn't clear about why it was eliminated, huh? Because of the design, what was the study about that?
That was not a decision that we made. However, understanding, you know, the heights of the buildings to, with such a small gap, my professional opinion, that's, majority of that is going to be shaded out through the day. I think that providing ivy could be an acceptable solution to that, so you can create a wider space for pedestrians and not have plantings that might go unkept, collect trash, and so forth. So as to why it was not installed, I cannot answer that.
I mean, why would they go unkept? Is the front gonna go unkept?
It shouldn't, but that's more in a daylight situation as opposed to kind of a back alleyway. It's a 10-foot-wide alleyway between two tall buildings, so I could see it.
Is there gonna be sufficient light? Is there gonna be sufficient light?
There are 100%. So...
All right, what I want to do is have you take a look real fast at a few of the comments in what's marked as A10 for identification. Comment 5.1 goes through. Comment 5.1 goes through, number of the revisions that were made. 5.2, street trees. And what street trees? The approved plan proposed hornbeams and street trees, although the crate beam is not a suitable street tree. Appears at the city around that the shade tree commission authorized the approved area of use. What was installed in front of your comments?
The crate, or crate myrtle, excuse me.
5.3 indicates that the plan's schedule should include the overall branching height of street trees and container-sized shrub material in addition to plant size. Planting notes and details should be revised to comply with technical requirements code. Notes or details that do not pertain to planting conditions should be removed. The details should be provided for the plantings within the retaining wall areas, which includes special soils. Any opposition or any objection to providing that information?
No.
Was any of that information included in the?
We made some updates, but I think a further discussion with the landscape architect should be had.
Okay, so no objection to providing that information, no question?
No, correct.
So the testimony.
I'd say, just notwithstanding all the process issues from a landscape architecture perspective, that landscape architecture is, in my opinion, much better in this design than the original. I mean, I understand, I understand all the issues. Right-of-way is a huge problem, so that's taking that away. The planting design and the move with the ramp does make sense from a street perspective. It's just that the process and the right-of-way is the issue, I mean, from my perspective. And I, yes, anyway, I'm disappointed about the hornbeam. I know that that was not part of this process either, that the hornbeams would have been probably.
So maybe blue buddy sage instead of formal mariate?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the planning board members of the landscape architect? No? Any questions from the board professionals of the landscape architect? No? Okay, any questions from the public regarding the landscape architect's testimony? No? Okay, next witness.
So the witnesses I have, that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Yeah.
Motion.
Yeah, can we get a motion to open to public comments?
Second.
Second, can we make the motion?
Eric.
Eric, okay.
You can do it, all in favor versus individual.
All in favor? All right. Okay, at this point, the public is allowed to make any comment that they like regarding this application from the very beginning of when it was presented to today. So anything that you'd like to say for three minutes?
You gotta have a clock?
Yes, we need a clock. Do you have a clock? Is there a clock back there? Oh, somebody took away the clock?
I mean, I could use my iPhone or something.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. Let's do that. Okay? So everybody has three minutes to state whatever they like about this application. Like I said, this can be, doesn't, it's not limited to what was said today. It's, it can be for this whole application from the beginning of time, beginning of time. So if anybody would like to come up, please come to the microphone. Please, to the back microphone. And go ahead, Jack.
Since you're giving a statement and testifying, you have to do an undero, please raise your right hand. You solemn swear in testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address, please.
Sure.
You can put your hand.
My name is Bree Cupfer. First name is Bree, E.R.E.E. Last name is Cupfer, K.E.F.E.R. I'm displaced right now, so I don't really have an address, but I could give you my forwarding mail.
Where do you get your mail?
24 Belair Court in Madawan, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Okay. Great. You got three minutes.
Okay, I'll keep it short in case anybody else wants to speak. Thank you all for your time today. I'm a hopeful tenant of this building, and obviously, this has not been enjoyable for any of us. I just want to be solution-oriented here, and I feel like all of us want that. All we want to do is move into this building. I'm pissed off. I'm sorry to not have to say that, that I was able to sign a lease, my money was taken from me. I thought I was moving in on October 9th. It's now coming up on the holidays. I'm living on a couch, out of boxes, out of storage units, and there's probably 90 of us that are in the same boat, if not worse. And what can be done for us to move in safely? Are there, can a temporary ramp be built while this one potentially has to get knocked down? Like, is the building not safe to move into? Is that the issue right now? Is that what it is? Like, just trying to understand from our perspective how we could get in quicker if we have nowhere to go. That's really all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name's Brielle Zakashevsky.
Hold on. Raise your hand. I'll walk you through it. You solemn swear in testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, you can lower your right hand. Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your last known address or current address, interim address.
Brielle, B.R.I.E.L.L.E. Zakashevsky, Z.A.K.A.S.H.E.F.S.K.I. I was in Jersey City, now 10 Princeton Drive, Middlesex, New Jersey. This whole process has honestly been a nightmare. Been homeless since September, looking for an apartment down here. I'm not really sure if you guys are like, where it is very difficult to move down here. From the beginning, realtors, for months, no phone calls back. Nobody gets back to you anywhere on here. And I picked up my whole entire life, I work in healthcare, I planned to start my new job, which is in Red Bank, from the city, and they call me two days before I'm supposed to move in and say, "You actually can't move in." I've been living off rent couches, paying for Airbnbs down here. Like, I'm by myself. You know how much money an Airbnb is each month? It's over like $5,000 a month. I have nowhere to go, and it's just like, hearing like conversations about like plants and stuff is like, makes me bring tears to my eyes, because it's like, I've been homeless since September, and there's nowhere else to go down here. Like, the availability down here in general, there's, there's nowhere to live. So it's like, I found this and thought it was a saving grace, and it ended up just like, I wish I, you know, I wouldn't recommend to anyone to come down here, because it's been so difficult. But yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sir, please raise your right hand. You solemn swear in testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address.
Zachary Alagna, Z.A.C.H. A.R.Y. Alagna, A.L.A.G.N.A. I currently collect my mail at 7 Sunset Court in Freehold right now. I've been packed in boxes in my girlfriend's house since August. I'm driving 45 minutes to work every day, driving home after 11, 12-hour shifts every single day of the week. I mean, everyone's the same pair of jeans for the last three weeks. All my stuff's in boxes, I can't even find it right now. Spent three hours last night digging for a jacket to work in there. You know, I, this bothers me sitting here listening to lights and plants like she said before. I have none of my clothes, I have none of my belongings. I've been living out of a duffel bag since September. I bought food because we were told, we were moving in, it was canceled three days before. I bought furniture, I've been paying renters insurance because they won't let me cancel it since August. You know, I just, I want to move in. That's all.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. You solemn swear in testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and spell it, and give us your last known address.
My name is Allison Haran, A.L.L.I.S.O.N. Last name, H.A.R.A.N. Like everyone else, the address is where my mail is being forwarded to. It's 65 Edgar Road in Madawan, New Jersey. I'd be remiss to not just echo all of the sentiments that I'm hearing tonight, because it's like a copy and paste of my life right now. I was supposed to move in October 1st. September 28th, I was told that that was not going to happen, and there's been no end in sight. And similar to some of the other conversations, you know, hearing about plants and light fixtures, but not hearing if the structure is actually sound and that we can move in is really disheartening. I've displaced my life, I've been living out of boxes, there's no end in sight, I don't know how to plan for anything, and it is truly heartbreaking. I am dying to be an Asbury Park resident. I am dying to contribute to the economy here. I am dying to say that I am a proud resident of this city, and I just feel like, I don't know when I'm going to be able to say that. I just want to get to the part of the story where I could say this is all behind me and behind us, and we're living in this Lake Avenue apartment, happy and packed and well-adjusted. And it's been, I came to the last meeting, I listened to the recording of the meeting in September, it just, it's really tough. There's been no compensation for our time, for our energy, for our efforts, and I just want some solutions like everyone else. So just wanted to say my two cents here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You solemn swear in testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and same situation with the address.
Jay Klein, J.A.Y.K.L.E.I.N. Current winter rental is 614 Lake Avenue, Spring Lake. We sold our home, and when we found out about this apartment, we loved it. We have to admit, it's a beautiful place, it's in a beautiful location, I give credit to the builder on that. At the time we signed the lease, we weren't aware that there was issues with the planning board, that the builder had changed things. And so it was kind of concerning when we found out we could not move. So once the closing came, we did put everything into storage. We do have three storage units right now I'm paying on. Lived on friends' couches for a week or two. Basically, eventually just had to bite the bullet and get the winter rental. We were fortunate to find one, because we do have a dog. We love Asbury Park because they will have the dog beach, so we're really looking forward to moving here. We're hoping the board can see through some of what the builder has done. When we first came to the first meeting, we saw how the board was attacking the witnesses, and we were wondering what was going on. We had no clue, until it finally dawned on us what did happen. And it wasn't your fault, you were just pretty upset the way most of us are right now. So we're hoping at some point you guys could find some sort of middle ground with them, and whether you have to make them change some things or approve the things that do need to be approved, so that we can move in. Obviously, we missed Thanksgiving, we missed Christmas, I'm sounding like. So we're, you know, New Year, maybe we'll bring some good things. Thank everyone for their time. I know it's late, you guys do this, and also have other businesses as well. Have a good evening.
Any other public comment? All right, motion to close public comment?
Second.
If I may just make some.
All in favor? Any votes? If I have a public comment, the portion's closed.
If I can just make some final comments. Obviously, what has happened here is regretful in terms of amount of time to get before the board. Obviously, there have been significant revisions that have been made to the plans. However, when we look at the revisions that have been made, they're a step, right? It's time to get these people moved into the building. We can deal with the aesthetics, the revisions that the board is looking for, we can escrow funds to ensure it's going to be done, but we got to get a TCO. We got to get these people moved in. So I'm going to ask that the board, obviously, consider the matter tonight, vote on the matter tonight, come up with a determination of what you want to do. We think the building looks fantastic, the plantings we think are beautiful, we think it's a better design in terms of landscaping and the ramp than had been approved. And we obviously know we have to get a right-of-way easement before the mayor council, if the board was to agree to these revisions, which certainly we will do. However, because we are talking about aesthetic issues with regard to the building, that shouldn't impede or hinder the ability for people to move in. If the board is going to request that any changes be made to the building, it could certainly do it, but I'm going to ask that as a condition of any approval, that the condition include a, an objection to a TCO being granted to my client based upon a sufficient escrow being posted to ensure that whatever the board is seeking in terms of revisions from what was done is going to be accomplished. I think it's time that we get this done. We've had a number of meetings on this, a lot of testimony. Let's get a vote on the matter, get it concluded, and let's get people moved into this building that are waiting to move in. Obviously, there's nothing wrong structurally with the building, we're talking about aesthetics at this point. Let's get this project done.
The board doesn't.
Thank you.
The board doesn't get involved in COs ever.
The board does not get involved, but I think you could include with their resolution that there would be no objection to a TCO being issued based upon the work being done, the escrow posted.
What happens if you find out that your catheter permit has been violated?
There's no issue with catheter.
Isn't there a flood plain issue?
No, it's, it's the F.A.
Flood hazard permit, I'm sorry, the flood hazard permit, I mischaracterized.
Well, we can condition, as we had discussed, that we have to get that letter, email, or some writing from the DEP that they have no issue with the P.I.T.T. understanding and conversation. The testimony, there's no issue with the P.I.T.T., the matter's putting cards in the deck.
Is there two distinct issues? One with DEP and one with this permit?
No, no, no.
That's the same thing.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's one issue.
I just wanted to ask, is it one or two? Okay.
Yeah.
And what happens if there's a flood in the interim before we get this? Where's the, what's the liability of my client, which is the board, by saying we don't object to a CO being issued? We don't want the city to understand.
We can't do anything until we get the DEP.
Okay.
And that would be a condition.
So then you wouldn't get a temporary CO until you got that?
Until we got that, that is correct.
That is correct.
Okay. And it's entirely up to the board. You've never done this. It's entirely up to you if you want to put a condition in, if you're going to approve the project, whether or not you want to place on the record that you have no objection to a temporary C.I.B. issued by the construction and building department and the internal administration of the city. We don't get involved in the issuance of COs, but it's your call.
I get what you're saying.
You're all set?
That's your call.
You're done? Okay. All right. Anyone in the, on the board like to start? Discuss?
I have a, first of all, to all of you as a public tonight who are waiting to move into your house, homes, we want you to be residents, and it's heartbreaking to hear that you've been in this situation. We are unfortunately bound by the laws, and the things that were approved for this project are substantially different than what we're constructing without any approval. That's highly problematic. It's mostly on land that doesn't belong to you, to your landlord. Is this the rental property, correct? It's on the city right-of-way. There are people on my block who've built a retaining wall six inches into the right-of-way, and were asked to remove it and move it back repeatedly, up and down the street. Your fence is three inches over, you need to take it down and put it back. I do agree with you, Jen, that this design, this landscape design, the ground plane design is better as it looks now. This isn't a question of aesthetics, it's a question of procedure. And it's not the Wild West, you don't get to just do whatever you want. It is heartbreaking that you can't move into your homes, and we want you to be our neighbors. And, you know, I don't know what the answer is, because how do we make sure it doesn't happen again? And not only that, it's going to have to go to the city council. There are people on my block who built a retaining wall six inches into the right-of-way and were asked to remove it and move it back repeatedly up and down the street. Your fence is three inches over. You need to take it down and put it back. I do agree with you, Jen, that this design, this landscape design, the ground plane design is better as it looks now. This isn't a question of aesthetics. It's a question of procedure. And it's not the Wild West. You don't get to just do whatever you want. It is heartbreaking that you can't move into your homes and we want you to be our neighbors. And I, you know, I don't know what the answer is because how do we make sure it doesn't happen again? And not only that, it's going to have to go to the city council before.
Yeah.
Anything can happen. The reason is, we'll explain, because this is being built in the public right-of-way, the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction. City council does. So e- even if we leave here tonight and say, yes, go, pass, go, hopefully you'll, you'll collect two hundred dollars from this guy. But the city council will be the ones who have to ultimately approve whether or not that can be built in the public right-of-way. There's another step.
I want to echo what Eric said. You know, it may seem like petty talking about lights and plant species and all, but again, this was someone who just built something without approval. Just went out on their own, didn't pay attention to what the law was, and just built something the way they wanted to, uh, including encroaching further onto city property. You know, and we're torn now as a board. We're completely sympathetic with you. But what Eric said, he said, you know, how do we make sure it doesn't happen again? So we're torn between, you know, slapping the hand of the developer, you know, as an example, so nobody does it again, and hurting you people. I mean, I know you're angry. You should really be angry at the developer. It's, it's a tough decision for us.
Anyone else? Any comments?
Yeah. I, uh, it's more than just a right-of-way issue, I think. Uh, the planning board has spent many, many hours going over this application years ago and to find out that after the project has been approved, something else was built. It, it just shouldn't happen. And just so many changes. If it was one change, it'd be one issue, but there are so many changes that were made.
It's a completely different building.
I just, I'm very upset and I, I feel very, very strongly, uh, for you people who are inconvenienced and your lives are put on hold. I, I, I just don't know what to say. I, I would not want to be in your position. However, we have a duty here to, to follow what the rules and regulations are. And I think we have a real, real problem here. And somebody talked about compromise, a good idea, but we haven't seen a compromise. We've seen, this is, this is what it is. We're making an application to, for you to accept what we've done in violation of the approval that we gave years ago. And I, I really feel for you. And I don't know. I, it's very upsetting.
Just so we're clear, we, we have indicated, that's sound entirely correct, we have indicated we would go back to the original right-of-way, what was proposed.
Right, but the right-of-way is not the only thing.
Just so we're clear.
Yeah, the right-of-way is not the only issue. There's so many issues.
It's a completely different building. I mean, the whole thing is just completely different than what we discussed and worked on and came to a agreement upon. And then to just, because you couldn't get an application deemed complete, just decided to go ahead and build what you wanted to build is just, it's really, you know, it's just such a bad process. And I feel really bad for all these people, like Jim said, that should be mad at the developer for doing what he did. It's ridiculous. And it really puts us in a really awkward spot because, you know, it's just, it wasn't approved. Nothing on that building has been approved. But all these people are, you know, homeless because of that.
Are there things we could suggest, the changes though?
I don't, I don't even know.
I don't. It feels so counterproductive to say, tear down this perfectly good ramp that lets these people walk into a perfectly good building. They could all leave here tonight. We don't have that power. I just want to be one hundred percent clear, we do not have that power.
Just so we understand, so from a procedural point of view, remember, ultimately have to do the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
It's one way or the other.
Right.
So I'm going to give you some basis, okay? You've got to identify and quantify the proposed site plan amendments and the new design standards. You have to make sure that, what they are. And then you're either going to vote on them either on an individual or collective basis. So, I mean, and your approach to this can be, you're either going to approve all of it, none of it, or some of it. But if we approve some of it, you're going to need to let me know what the sum of it is.
Particulate with specific.
What they are. And then, and then we, whatever, uh, conditions that we're going to add, if you approve it in some form or another, as proposed, what the conditions are going to be. Certainly, one has to be this D E P issue. We're not just going to take an email. We're not just going to take Carter's word for it, although I'm not, not saying he's not being truthful. We're ultimately going to need something in, in writing and on a letterhead from the D E P or whomever that says that, yes, it's okay to have the pits as long as you don't put the thirds, the third tier in there. And whatever is, is being proposed. Other, additionally, if you were so inclined to say you had no objection if the city issued temporary COs for the units, that would have to be not, that would have to be limited to where all of the conditions of, of the amended approval have to have been met so that there's no possibility of any liability on behalf of the planning board of the city if there's an issue going forward after the tenants are in the building. I want to make sure, I want to make that perfectly clear. I've represented you for twenty-two years. I'm not going to argue with you to make sure that something like that is in there. Basically, that's it. If you want, you're going to have to have a discussion as to what you want to approve, disapprove. It has to be as I said.
Kind of like what I'm, what I'm seeing, and you guys can please keep me honest, is that there's a, there's a group of things that we could talk about, meaning like, you know, that, that we say, all right, well, yes, we need the shielding on the lighting. We need, we need to, to see the, you know, the lighting that's going on the ramp, you know, things like that, we could say, yes, all that stuff happens. D E P, understood, that happens. Right-of-way, okay, now that's on this side, that's a, that's big, okay? We haven't had discussions about facade. I mean, what, what are?
The colors.
The colors, you know? I mean, that kind of thing. So that's another thing that, that's big. So it's kind of like, I mean, there, at least the way that I see it, it's kind of like, no, we could say, all these things, okay, based on these, based on these requirements, and we could talk about those and they say, okay, we can approve it based on this. Now, we have to decide on right-of-way, facade. I think that those are the things that are truly outstanding. Is that, am I wrong? You know, because D E P, we all agree on what, that, you know, you want it to be safe, you want it to be right, and you need the D E P to tell us specifically, this is okay.
Yeah, in terms of the right-of-way, if I can handle that any, same way I handle it on any application, if you decide that you're okay with the amendments as proposed that are going to go, items going into the right-of-way further approaching, it would have to be a condition of approval that are there, those, those are approved by the mayor and council.
Well.
But that's, I can do that. That's entirely up to you.
Should we consider all the things that we're, uh, that we'd like to put in the resolution already? Some of the things that we want to put in? And then we'll deal with the hard stuff, the right-of-way and the facade.
I, I think the.
Is that all right? Or, go ahead.
I think the applicant should come back to us and tell us what he proposes. He's heard what has, what the board has indicated, but I don't feel comfortable with telling the applicant that you do this, 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 and this, and it's fine.
Well, you have what he has, excuse me for interrupt. You have what he has proposed.
Correct.
It's up to you to make the decision.
Okay, yes, it's either this or that. I hear you.
The applicant has put their position on the record. These are the changes that we made and that we're requesting approval.
Okay.
But legitimately, what are the remedies? Like, are we going to tell him to paint the whole facade? That seems, like, are we going to tell him?
But, but that's what it comes to.
Right.
Once we get to the hard ones, what do we say about the facade? It's white. Well, it's not supposed to be white. It's not supposed to be nearly white. What, what do we say? What's the resolution to something like that? But I don't know if the rest of the board feels the same way.
I mean, from, in my experience as a design professional, it's the cost of doing, it's so astronomical, and it would be so time-consuming. And you would, these people would not be in their homes for six more months.
But does, but does fixing the facade have, have anything to do with people being able to move in?
You wouldn't tell them what colors.
No, we wouldn't say what.
You would say, either you would accept or reject what he's proposing. And then it's up to him to decide what his color's going to be. Or you say, we, we accept it, fine. We reject it and we're in favor of the original color. I mean, something like that, but you can't, you're not going to redesign the building.
No.
To me, honestly, the facade issue is far more, is the, the windows are a much bigger issue to me than the color. You know, that's, and that's something that.
Well, it's the whole.
You know, once you change the windows, that's, you're.
It's a different building.
That's a huge.
It's a different.
The building was supposed to fit into the character of the industrial, lair housing look, yeah. And I wasn't even on the board when it was approved, but I could see from the pictures.
And, and as far as I'm concerned, the glass, the glass balconies are not, the white and the glass balconies, to me, are an issue besides the windows, and that kind of just changes everything. It brings it back to what it, what was designed to begin with.
But having said that, I will say that the idea of like deconstructing a built building, you know, it's painful, I mean, it just.
It's impractical.
There's a lot of things in terms of, from the environmental perspective, there's a lot of reasons not to do that. And from the, you know, the people that need to move in. Um, you know, I'm just saying, like, the painting and all that, I don't think it's going to solve the problem.
And to Brielle's point, it's hard to find housing here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, but it.
You don't like sacrificial lambs.
But Jack, what is our liability?
I'm sorry?
What is our liability if we say no? I mean, what?
Well, you'd have to, if they're requesting relief, you have to have a rational basis for saying no. Not just in terms of being punitive, you know, saying, well, we're going to punish you by saying no, that's not the basis for it. You'd have to have some rational basis to say no. But the liability, there is no liability. The liability would be in appeal if you decide to accept what you're, what you're going to do. And there would be an appeal and a judge would decide the case whether or not they're right or we're right. Just like we've had other appeals.
All right, so if we're, if we're looking to, for some solutions, you know, um.
Why don't you, is there anything that you can live with that's been proposed? Let's, let's try, let's go, go in that direction, just thought.
I think we'll be here for, we'll be here for five nights.
Yeah, well, then, yeah, I mean, but I, it's something that's got to be done. I mean, you can either consider it all as, like I said in the very beginning of my comments, you consider it collectively, or you can consider things on an individual basis. But if it's an entire package, which is essentially, that is what the applicant is proposing, then practically speaking, that might be the better approach.
Well, I know that, that I can say that, that the issue with, you know, D E P, that's that, as long as they think that it's safe, I'm good. I think that we've discussed lighting and whatnot. I think that that can be resolved by modifications personally. I think like, you know, the ADA railings and things like that that were on there, that can be resolved. Um, you know, the fence being replaced, you know, the, the, uh, the mounted lights being, you know, modified, the balcony lights being modified, the stair lights being modified, all that stuff, I think that we can work out. The issue more so is going to be the facade and the right-of-way. So why don't we talk about right-of-way? Let's get, let's get to that. Because I think the other things, unless somebody else feels differently, there are other things we can work out.
I'm inclined to approve the ramp as it is.
Yeah, I don't really have major issues.
And leave it to the city council to decide whether or not there's a remedy or a exaction or a penalty or a whatever, a fee.
Yeah, it involves all the improvements, not just the ramp.
Right.
Right, it would be anything that has to do with right-of-way.
Yeah, okay.
That, I mean, it's a fair statement. Does it look better? Yes, it looks better, but it looks better on land that's not yours.
Yeah, that's right.
You know.
If I did that, I would be in trouble.
I would be, yeah, we all would be in trouble if we went three inches, never mind two hundred square feet.
So it's pretty much in a sense that the new, new improvements into the right-of-way are not objectionable by the board so long as this is mayor and council approving?
Yes.
Yeah. Anyone, anyone objecting to that characterization?
I think the mayor and council should have a discussion with the developer about the future, how this doesn't happen again.
So, so that's something you would say you would vote positively on amendment for that?
I think that, I think that, that from, from what we see, I tend to agree with Eric, that visually, it is more appealing, but it's not in your land, so it's not for us to decide right-of-way. So.
Why isn't it?
Sorry?
Why isn't it? We're going back to the original question, which Dan said at the beginning, half jokingly, in New York, he's seen people have to take off the story of the building. This building is nothing close to what was approved. It's, so, I mean, if we're going to sit here and say, okay, you broke twenty laws, we'll let you slide on eighteen, but we're going to say, no, the two, I think it sends a bad message to everybody in the future.
It's up to you, as long as you feel you've got the basis for denial on that basis, that's fine. It's up to you guys.
That's how I feel. And as far as the temporary CO, I'd be dead against it. Because like you said, we've never done that before. So we're going to open up, get doors.
I, I happen to tend to agree with you, Mayor, about the TCO, because we've never said, like even with any of the other applicants that we have here, where we feel that we would want to say, don't give them a TCO, we're not allowed to. It's not our place. So I would also disagree with the TCO concept. Even though, once everything is done and approved, a TCO should not be hard to come up. So, I mean, that's my feeling also. Anybody else have any thoughts about the TCO? I'm, I'm just afraid of the future. That's all. I'm afraid of what, what precedent it sets. There's a lot of development coming into this to happen.
It's not our place to decide about the TCO.
No, it isn't, but it is our place to not put it as a recommendation.
Correct.
That is our place.
Yes, yes, I agree, I agree with that.
Okay. Okay, so we are in, well, I don't know if we want to, how, how we want to handle that, but.
How does everyone feel? Do we have three, four members that are saying they're against? Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I think it's a bad thing to do.
One, two, three, four, five. I agree. Five.
Okay, so we have five that are not in agreement with recommending TCO. Because it's not in our place, it's not our place.
Three members can speak on it if they wish.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Now, I think that, I think that we should have, figure out what we want to do about right-of-way, whether we want to leave it and leave it as is and then let, let, punt it to essentially mayor and council to decide what will be done or what the applicant will have to do in order to make it happen.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
We're going to be subject to cross, go ahead, go ahead. Sure, go on, sure.
Because I, I, I understand there's a big deviation from the original approval to what's there now. Is the black base, the brick base, something that's acceptable to the board? The black brick face?
Where it is today?
There's just the aesthetics of it right now.
Where it is today, I don't find that, personally, I don't find that to be the problem.
Okay.
The problem is above.
Well, I, I have panels above, so I can extend up a particular look. If, if it's the redwood that's alarming or the white, I can do a combination of extend If, if it's the red wood that's alarming or the white, I can do a combination of extend the brick, split brick up the building along with painting a portion of the facade. As well as, and obviously, I'm looking for the board for guidance, I could eliminate the glass balconies and put a steel in there to try and get closer to an industrial look for the building. And, and no one's going to want to do this again. Let me just say that. You know, I, I think I said earlier, there were a lot of things that happened with this application. I've been in this town for 22 years, I've completed a lot of projects in this town. I'm not a one-time developer coming in this town. And many of you who know me and know the projects I've done, know that. I've done tremendous amount of historic restoration in this town. I've done items on the national registry. I've done things that are in the landmark district that I financed for this town. I am not a one-time, and I, financially, it's, it's a huge, huge loss. I do feel, and I'm very sorry for the applicants, I mean, for the, for the tenant applicants here. I, it's, it's a terrible situation, but listen, I am more than willing to work, I do would like a direction though, where we can come to a solution.
Could you go with the color scheme that was more in line with what was approved in the original?
Yeah, I just wonder with the base, because the base is a black base.
Was a softer, was a gray, it was, you know, it's a much lighter than that, but that black is pretty harsh. I mean, looking at the progress, it's in the report.
Yeah, has anybody, has everyone been out to the site?
Yeah.
I took a couple of board members through the site. And I'm a little surprised because I thought I got a good feedback when, when they were there, but the, the black, what, what's your suggestion on that?
Let me just discuss scheme that was originally approved, something in line with that.
The original color scheme.
Or, or close to it.
Well, I'm asking you if, if the black can stay acceptable and we carry that up. And we, we mute.
You'd have to be a lot more specific than just saying carried up.
Well, we could, we could use a light gray on the, on the white, a very light gray. I've seen facades of that nature where you have black brick with a light gray and steel rails. Is what I'm trying to get at.
I know, Chris, frankly, I don't think that's enough. You know, I hate to say that, but the whole, the whole facade is totally different than what was approved prior to this. And, you know, we talk about the colors. It's more than just the color, it's, it's the windows, it's the balconies, it's the combination of all of these. And I, I hear what you're saying, I, I, I know what you're trying to do and I appreciate that. You're trying to save as much as you possibly can, but when you talk about this, until we see something that you, you you're actually going to do and give us some colors and.
Like what, what can be done so that we can see it and say yes?
You can't approve it unless you've seen it.
Exactly, well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I know, exactly. I want to see, I want to see what you're, you're suggesting for the facade to look like. Because you know what our concerns are. Our concerns are the windows, our concerns are the balconies, our concerns are the, are the white finish. That's, we need, we need, we need some solutions for that and for us to see what that is. I think that pretty much everything else we could kind of, we could kind of figure out.
I think that, you know, it's true, you can't approve something you haven't seen.
But, but you know what our concerns are and I would, I would advise that you go back and show us what you can do in a form of a solution.
Let me see if I can help.
Go ahead.
So that we give some specific directions. If the facade changed in terms of coloration, how about the architectural? Are you okay with the way they are? Assuming Carter goes and we goes.
No, Jack, you have to look at the whole.
Well, I'm trying to get them to where, give them some direction. I don't want to have, I don't want to see them go and do all the work and then come back.
But architect, there is no way to create, what is, what is built, there is no way to get to this without deconstructing the facade. There is no way. There is absolutely no.
I'm not an architect.
There is no possible way. The windows aren't the same size, they're not the same proportion, they are the same design. There's nothing that you could do to that building to get to this without deconstructing and taking it all apart. All you can do is fix the applique on it.
Okay, so the board be satisfied? Assuming that if the applicant came in and fixed what could be fixed to more coloration and to the original.
I would like to see what the proposal is that they can do.
The things that could be changed are the color of the panels, either by paint or by changing them to some other material like a brick panel. You could change the railings, which seems quite frankly expensive, difficult and dangerous for tenants. Or they wouldn't be able to, I don't know, you wouldn't be able to have tenants move in while you don't have railings, so.
And I think it's a completely different design aesthetic, so to require that some of the things that we had on the original building were going unapplicable on this building.
The windows aren't even the same size.
Yeah, I know, so everything's completely different, so it just seems like the, like you said, just kind of cosmetic changes could be made. Nothing really substantial.
That is what would be the, like, well, actually, let me ask you. Anything can be done. It's time and money, right?
And then, I mean, there are people that are waiting to move in, I mean, I, I, I really feel badly for them. It's just a terrible place to be and, you know.
These poor folks would be able to occupy the building while the facade materials were changed. Other than that, there's probably not much more that can be done while there's.
I mean, I think we're trying to piecemeal.
What you said actually is what I was trying to get at before the TCO, that if it's just a matter, and I'm not saying just, I'm just limiting it. Limiting it to the facade materials and changing that. Right? It wouldn't affect or have an impact on people occupying the building, and that was the point I was trying to get at with the TCO.
But that's for the other, that's for the other, it's not the overplaying.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just, that's the reason I was going down that road, is if we're only dealing and we can work through the other issues. And at that point, we're only dealing with the aesthetics of the materials on the outside that wouldn't impact people moving into that building. Is there a way then to go forward so they can occupy the building and you can then deal with the facade issues? So we're just talking about the color.
Well, I think Eric's right. I mean, you could do different panels on the outside, I think window sizing deconstructs the front of the building. But windows, but, you know, I, I mean, you could do panels, brick panels, any color. You could change the base.
What, is it a rain screen? Is that the exterior? What is the exterior treatment right now?
The, the assembly? You, you know, you have, you have a vapor barrier over a substrate and then you, you have a track system for the Nishihara. Do it here too.
So.
I mean, Nishihara makes brick panels.
They, so in theory.
I could do inserts on the windows, like, like I've looked into that about just doing, if you want divided light, I could, on those windows, I could put in like a, like a.
Let's stay on the facade. So what, what I believe Mr. Sapna is saying is that these panels that are currently adhered to the, to the facade are demountable and can be changed out, but that still just changes the color. Now, I tend to think that trying to get the windows to change is just so ridiculously complicated because the building is closed up already. And the interior is already in place. You have drywall, you have electrical, you have, everything is already there.
I could put, I could put on the windows, I mean, I don't know if everybody would like that, but, you know.
Has there ever been a situation where a resolution, they have to complete something after the fact in them? Like we, the approval hinges on them completing something down the road?
Yes, Johnny Mac's across the street.
You want to go there again?
No, that's exactly where, and I advised the board back then, none of you were members. I said, you never should approve anything you haven't seen. And he said, I promise you'll like it. So, the very next meeting, every member of the board said, we don't like it. And he said, I'm not taking it down, so.
Yeah, that's a, I mean.
I'm not saying Carter. Look, I respect you.
I remember him swearing at me, I said, who's walking?
No, I, I, I respect you, I believe you're a really good developer, you've done great work in the city and I think the board does as well. I, I believe that everyone I spoke to.
And we will come back and do whatever the board wants with that.
But I get, but I'm, I'm not comparing you to him. I'm just saying, boards should not approve wholesale changes without having seen them.
No, I'm not saying agree to the wholesale changes, but is there a path forward where we can get approvals and get tenants in there? And we will work with the facade and the board to make sure we get that facade.
And I think what he's saying is that there is a path forward and the path forward is we need to see what your proposal is for getting the facade to look more harmonious with the color palette and general design aesthetic. I don't have a problem with the base of the building, the black doesn't bother me, the, the ground plane doesn't bother me. But there is this issue of.
And in, dovetailing in with that is, there will still be other site plan amendments that have to be approved and there has to be design exceptions approved. There's no sense in telling them to do this only to come back and say, well, we don't like the design exceptions. If you're going to do this, you should be satisfied what you're going to do in terms of the design exceptions as well as the mechanical site plan amendments being requested. Because there's no sense in prolonging this, just going back and forth constantly. If you, if, if you're inclined to go with what Eric just described, much more eloquently than I do, then, then you should also give the applicants some indication if you're satisfied with the design exceptions as a result of that and the, and the technical amendments to the site plan. Let's cut right to the chips, let's, let's, let's get to the substance and either make it go or not, one or the other.
Jack, the applicant indicated that he could do something with the windows and I'd like to see what he could do. And, you know, I understand probably better than most people difficulties of popping those windows out and replacing them.
Assuming that to be the case, assuming Carter says yes to the coloration and the windows, would the board be inclined to go and grant, granting the design exceptions and the technical amendments to the site plan? Because if we're not, there's no sense in sending them off and having them do all that work and coming back and saying no to the other, the other requests.
But I think Barbara articulated pretty well as to the things, the lighting and that type of thing can be worked out.
Sure. That's fine. I'm more, I'm, you know, whatever the design exceptions are that are left over from the list, well, I want to make sure that we can deal with. I don't want to see anybody keep going back and forth, coming and prolonging it anymore. Not the board, not the applicant, certainly not these folks that have got nothing spoken.
Is there any sort of non-reflective thing here? Except there might be an issue with, you know, occupancy, not doing something with the glass balconies. Any sort of film you could put on that that would make it non-reflective?
Yeah, I could put a 3M film on it.
It sounds like there are three big items here. The windows, the facade color scheme and the the materiality of the balcony railings that we would have to see your proposal in order to approve. Does that sound, does that, is that a fair?
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
To approve.
To, 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 to move, to, to, to get, to get to a point where we could say yes, but we have to then agree amongst ourselves that we, do we also feel comfortable that the ground plane landscape ramping issue is settled? And that we're going to be comfortable enough with those issues that we are, that once we approve the other things, we would be, we would pass that on to the.
I, I would think, let me just, let me just say what, regarding that, Eric, I don't think that whatever, whatever the, the board feels about that ground cover and that ramp and the right of way, some of them may say yes or no, so I think that that should be a separate item.
Yeah, yes, agreed.
That we decide. The right of way will be a separate item that we decide. The facade is something that you'd have to come back and show us. And everything else, I think we can talk about and say, yea or nay.
So when you're talking about deciding, are you talking about getting a resolution on all these other items?
No.
No. No, you got to do this all together.
Right, right, right.
You got to do this all together.
You're, you're absolutely right.
You can't go down the primrose path.
Right.
And, and it's for the applicant's benefit and everyone's benefit. That all I need is, you're not supposed to take straw votes, okay? But under the circumstances, this is a very, very different situation. We've never faced this.
Right.
So I think we have to do something extraordinary in order to accomplish a reasonable result for everybody, for all the stakeholders.
I think that regarding the right of way, I think that we should just have a vote that says, are you in agreement with allowing it to remain and bringing it to council? Or does it have to go back to what was approved?
Like a straw vote right now?
Right, a straw vote.
Assuming, assuming that it has to be, you have to do this, assuming, you just, don't take a formal vote there. Because if you don't like what Carter brings back for the facade, you still have to look at the totality. And I don't want to be able to put the applicant in a position and say, well, you've approved all of this, you haven't approved this. No, no, it's got to be an entire concept. I'm just trying to see if we could give everyone some direction. If you're, if they're inclined to change that to where you think it would be correct, then, you know, you'd be inclined to look favorable on the right of, new right of way encroachments, the new design waivers requested and the technical site plan requests that have been made. Yeah, well, DEP is a condition of approval, that's got to be in there no matter what.
Well, may, and we may have an answer.
You may, and if that's a non-issue, it's a moot point, it's a moot point.
Yeah, let's take our temperature.
As, if, let's put it this way, is what I suggested seemed to be reasonable and acceptable to the board?
Yeah.
What'd you suggest?
I suggested that assuming Carter can come back with a different facade, address the windows and the balconies and facade colors, those three items. Would the board be inclined to grant, look favorably on the design exceptions that are the result of this application and the technical amendments to the site plan?
In, in my opinion, for me, it would have to be specific things that I've heard here today that are yea or nay. Meaning very specific to lighting and very specific to things. I know that some people don't think that's important, but I do.
I think they can come up with a solution to the lighting.
Yeah, 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 but, but we have some things that aren't on the plans, we need to add them to the plans, those kind of things. So those, those, I can be very specific is what that is. And I'm sure that our members here could be very specific as well. So that I would like to just do.
Yeah, we'll give them recommendations.
The recommendations have to do with, I see that, that, that the, none of the, the ramp lights have not been added to the plan. Okay, so we need them added to the plan of what they are and they must be 2,700K. Because right now, there's nothing that's on there that says what they are and they were temporary.
So you don't want the surrounding light that is the pole light and the analysis that they did, you want something specific?
No, it was, they're not on here, they're not on the, they're not on the plan. The temp, the temporary lighting.
The temporary landscape lighting?
No, I said the ramp lights.
The temporary ramp lights?
The temporary ramp lights. I want them to be added to the plan.
As temporary ramp lights?
No, no. What are they going to be once you're done?
We're going to remove them.
Okay, so it's all, so then I would liken the resolution that they will be removed.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then that's, that's easy, okay? All the balcony lights that are 4,000K and the ones that are on the stairs have to be brought down, you said shading. There's some film that you will be able to put in. I'd like that in there to make sure that that's there. The, um, um, let's see. The ADA railing must be compliant, right now it's not.
No, we'll.
So obviously that has to.
We'll ensure that's compliant.
The wood fence, the wood fencing will be replaced in kind.
I think that's done already.
Oh, and the ramp, I mean, we've mentioned that with the ramp, they put stucco on there, finish out, finish it out with stucco. Yeah, the walls, that they were going to be finished up with some sort of stucco or some, some kind of a finish.
I would have them come back with a proposal that is harmonious with the facade.
Add that to your, add that to your proposal.
Context to the facade.
Okay. So what, what the ramp looks like was on that side of those ramps, right now it's just cement. What do you propose?
No, Jack, it's, it's needs to be parched. But, but finish in something that, I hear you what you're saying, Eric. Finish in something that is complimentary to whatever our facade design is.
Exactly. Um, that's, those are the things that, that are the minor things that are on the list.
Okay.
Now, maybe we can talk about the right of way, what, just a straw poll?
Wait a second, you say they're the minor things?
Yes.
If we have to stay here till 12, I don't care to get solved. I mean, but should we go through the whole list of all the exceptions and everything, so you don't do eight and reset? Oh, you know, because it was quarter of eleven, we forgot three other things. I mean, so.
I'll stay as long as anybody else is.
Well, who has a total list of like, what they're supposed to do, what they did wrong? Let's go through them one by one.
You look at the.
Will the exceptions be different?
I.
When they come back?
I'm just gonna go there. But, okay. But right now, the exceptions stand, they're set forth in Donna's most recent report on page 13 in section 8.1.
Right.
Summary of relief is eight, 8.0, that's the exceptions required.
Right. That's where we're talking about the light color temperatures and the excessive lights. Excessive light levels. That's where I brought in those couple of items. The rest of them, I think that we could, we could live. That's my.
Yeah, one or two of them may be omitted as a result of.
Maybe you're talking the one that are, the ones that are 4,000.
Right. We want them all brought down. We want them all brought down. The 2,700 and whatever kind of shielding you can put on that.
What report?
That is on Clark Caton, page 13.
December 9?
December 9. It's on page 13, 8.1. Yeah, 13. So those were the lights. The first two are different light items. Then the next one is the minimum parking stall size and the minimum parking aisle width. Are we in agreement that that would be, we're okay with that based on the fact that there are, what do you call those things? Those, the issues? The stackers. Because they're stackers, they can be different, and because it's valet, it can be different.
So Doug, did you have any problem with, with, what they're doing?
If, if the public's not allowed in to operate vehicles that's strictly valet, then those are, they're professionals and they know what they're doing.
Okay, so that would be something like, we say, you only have to bring back those, right?
Right, you don't have to bring that back as long as forever on end, 24/7, it's valet.
Condition of approval.
That's a condition of approval, 24/7, it's valet, forever on end.
Carter, is this gonna be a condo or an apartment building?
It's an apartment building.
Okay, so then there's no bylaws to put that in.
Okay.
And that's, and the third stacker is a, it will not be installed.
That's correct.
Third stacker will not be installed.
But will confirm.
The lower one.
I mean, it will not be used.
The stackers will be installed, the lower ones disabled.
We'll have a dominant plate.
Okay.
Next one. Trim and attached elements not white or shade of wall color.
We're coming back.
You're coming back on that. Building top is not articulated. That's true.
That is true.
That's very true.
But if he comes back with a brick panel or some other type of thing, that could be built into what he's proposing.
Well, you'll know that that's something we're interested in.
Where do you stand? I mean, generally.
Generally.
On the parapet?
Yeah.
I mean, I can reface the, repanel it.
Tell them.
If that's what you come back with, if you're coming back, come back with that.
I mean, the tricky thing is gonna be integrating the windows into the.
You're absolutely right.
Into a brick panel, which is what I'm hearing the most, I don't know, I'm hearing that the brick panel kinda is like what people are looking for.
You mean integrating the existing windows?
What's that?
You're saying, you see the challenge of integrating the existing windows with brick panels?
Yeah, I just.
It's gonna be a tough detail.
You know, I mean, you can get like, I, I can just see by Eric's face, you know, it's not, it doesn't, you know, I'm just throwing idea out, but, you know, the, the kind of, the grids that I, you can get, it, it's not gonna, I mean, might not.
The proportion's just all wrong.
Yeah.
So if people just don't like the white, would it be cheaper just to paint it?
Yeah, we'd paint it.
Yeah, but you're gonna be repainting it in three years.
I'd paint it. I mean, I don't like, that's fine.
You'll come up with something.
You'll come up with something, you'll come back and we'll show, we'll, we'll, they'll show us. And that's, those are the three things that are, that you come back with.
Yeah, and the windows.
With the windows.
And the right of way.
Sorry? And the right, and the right of way we have to talk about now. Is that right?
So these were all the things?
Yep, it, it ended up being all, being these.
Through 50 pages.
Yes, we do that all. Yes.
We gotta little things down to the simplest. So then they'll let, and then, of course, the technical aspects of the site plan, they're, they're technical in nature and engineering and so on, so.
Right, they can.
But, and the last issue is the additional encroachments into the right of way.
Right, the additional encroachments into the right of way.
Are you okay with that? And if someone pushes?
Well, it depends on the straw poll. Because do I think that, do I think that it looks better? Yes. Am I okay with that right of way encroachment or not? So that's me. But that, there, hey, there are many people here. So whatever.
I don't have a problem with it.
You don't have a problem with it? Okay. What about, sorry?
All who are comfortable with the right of way as it exists, raise your hand.
One, two, three.
Four. Four?
Four.
Without a majority?
No.
Okay.
And two of those people are city councilors, so I'll pull it out.
Okay. So there you go.
Is it the ramp more or the little patio?
For, for myself? Or what?
You were okay with it.
No, I, visually, I'm okay, but the fact that it's in the right of way so egregiously, I'm so against it.
But you're, you're talking about the ramp.
I'm talking about the ramp, I'm talking all the right of way. Because you're.
What if I cut, what if I cut the, I cut the planter back out of the right of way?
It's, it's all of it. I'm sorry, it's all of it. Meaning the right of way for me?
Hold on one second, hold on one sec. It's just like, so I cut the, the planter back and the patio back to two and a half, whatever feet it is, and then leave the ramp.
But still, how many, how many hundreds of feet in the right of way? That's why, I, I mean, I don't know what the calculation of that is. I'm just, the, for me, and I don't know what everybody else feels, that's the issue, is how much in the right of way is. Because if we allowed all of things like this to happen throughout the city, the city would be losing all of their, all of their, their sidewalks and all their, all, all the, all the lines between the, the border of the building and, and the street.
And the liability we accept for doing it.
Right. It's not, that's the part that it's so big.
All right, just the original approval had fans going into the right of way.
Agreed, agreed. The original approval. I would be fine with going back to the original approval, in my opinion.
The problem with that is it's, it's putting a worse, like, we're not fixing the problem of the right of way, and we're going back to a less.
An incompatible.
A design that doesn't work well, and we're still not proving a point.
And.
Like, it's still not solving the issue, although it is giving back this, so then what it, then this, then we're gonna have a worse condition that the city owns, I mean, the city has the, the right to it back, but it's gonna be, the city's gonna have the right to it back to like a bad condition. So why, it doesn't solve, like, I don't think that solves anything, it makes the condition worse.
And from an environmental standpoint, it's literally a waste of carbon to just tear down something built.
Unless there was some elegant solution.
Yeah.
Within.
Well, I mean, the problem, one of the problems is I, I, you know, I, I, it's easier, I would assume, I mean, I don't want to delay it, and I appreciate that a lot of you like the design better, but, you know, I feel like I could go down a path and it just wastes more time. So I, I, I can relocate the ramp. I'm still gonna need a, to do an amendment, but I won't encroach on the right of way anymore. I'll just push the ramp up against the building and cut back the terrace and cut back the planter.
You don't have enough, the ramp will be in the right of way.
Well, the ramp always has to get to the street. Yeah, yeah, it always has to get to the street. So if I go straight with the ramp up against the building, and then I just turn it and come out, then I'm not gonna be any more in the right of way than I was prior to the, on the original approval.
No, you will, because you raised the level of the, of the.
No, 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 because I have five feet off my building. So the ramp goes from the stoops, it goes along the, heading east, until I get to an elevation where I turn it south to the sidewalk. I can run, I have a long run there facade, so I can easily run the ramp along.
All the way down.
All the way down. And just, it's a short turn, and I'm on my own property. It's not as pretty, doesn't look as nice, but.
You're gonna have to have your civil engineer look at that, because you're gonna need a landing. You're gonna need a landing. You can't just do a straight run. You need a landing.
No, I'm gonna go.
There's a, there's a maximum distance you can go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have to have a flat landing.
Yeah, but you're gonna hit, you're, you're gonna have to, you have an intermediate, when you go certain length, I'm with you, Eric, I've done, right? You get intermediate, you need intermediate landing that's five feet. Then you continue straight, and then I'll turn it when I hit the, basically, the east property line.
So Carter, you're, you're saying, taking this ramp, pushing it up against the building, getting rid of this ramp, getting where it angles.
No, go, keep going straight.
No, he's gonna keep going straight.
Keep going straight.
Keep going all the way up here.
Yep. And turn it and go right. I don't think it looks as nice, but I think I can do it. But remember, a lot of the encroachment on the right of way is the fact that what, the long piece is in the right of way. That's what you gotta realize, because that's off the building facade. And the reason why we did that was to create some green, you don't see the green, it's not grown, but there's actually a planter up against the building between the ramp, the initial run.
Here, they can see it better here. You're talking about this green here.
Yes.
So if we take this ramp, push it right up against the building.
Right.
What about pushing that up against the building, having this come back, and this part of the ramp running back parallel to it? We're okay with that?
Well, I mean, originally, it's kinda.
It's similar to what it was.
Yeah.
It solves one problem, you wouldn't have to come to council.
Yeah, I don't think I wanna go to city council.
If, when, if you have to come to council, it's gonna take the ordinance.
It's sucker the hot between now and Christmas.
Put in the right of way, and, and you can't cancel the ordinance with one point and one year ahead of the next year.
It's, it just extend, I just, I gotta put.
That extends it all.
I gotta cut it and.
We'll get it.
You know, it's a lot of work, but.
We'll get it out.
So what's the bottom line on the encroachments?
Well, I don't think the encroachment's gonna be much greater than, but it'll be in a different area.
Will it have any effect on the original grant, that you need an amended approval?
Yeah, because it's not gonna be exact.
Just wanna make sure that you understand.
It's gonna be a relatively minor.
So does, what, do you still have to go back to city council though?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, what's.
So there's no way you can.
Why would, why would we have a less?
Return the ramp to what was originally approved.
It doesn't make any sense.
Speak to your fellow board members.
Oh, no, I'm just, I wanna get solved. I'm just saying, what is the point if the city council still has to approve it and it's still encroaching?
But we're gonna work to try to get it.
But it's not gonna be in the same location.
We'll get it to the similar square footage, the dimensions may be a little bit off.
The location will be.
So when you, when you're granted the easement for the right of way, is it, how, how's it stated? Is this a amount of square feet or is it a distance?
What you do is, uh, R W E's, you attach a number of things. One is the description, which is like you have the description of the area coming out, the turns and whatnot. You also have the square footage. So you have the plan that reflects the square footage on there, and then you have the actual legal description showing the way it goes.
And because you've gone up a foot elevation, it has to change the run of the ramp.
From the original plan. But, but I, I, you know, how I'm trying to compensate for that is just to push it up against the building. So have a longer run. The two runs, the initial approval, were equal distance. It kinda just did a switchback.
Probably it would still require you to go before the city council. I mean, there's some way you can return to the original or.
Well, because the run's gonna be a little different, because the elevation's different, and a third of the ramp was inside the building. So I'm just gonna run it outside, up against the building. I have five feet, where I'm not in the right of way.
Yeah, so most of that run can be within the property, not in the right of way.
I'm just trying to see if there's some way you didn't have to go before city council to get the time, but it doesn't look like there is.
The solution to that would be to hold the, the sidewalk end of the ramp where, where it originally was proposed, and then extend your run on the, on your property, if you have enough room. I don't know.
You know what I could do? I mean, I could take the whole ramp out and do a lift. I could just put a lift in, right to the right side of the stoops, take out the ramp altogether. I have one over at the beer garden.
But your stairs and your patio are not the same as your original approvals. You still have to go to the city council. So.
No, the stairs are the same. Stairs and the landing in front of the stairs are the same.
But didn't you extend it to the left or?
Well, I'm gonna cut that back. But you're, but I'm thinking of putting the, if you put the lift in, you'd put the lift to the right. The right of the stoops, and then just have it come up. And that would probably be less of, if I did a lift.
Would you have to get, by the way, approval for access to the lift?
Yeah, I would, well, I, I would, yeah, well, I assume you'd, from the sidewalk. I mean, everybody gets access, you don't wanna, I don't think you, but it's certainly the least, the least amount of right of way that I would need, even probably less than the original plan.
Might be able to put it with the existing easement.
Well, five feet's tight. It's probably be a little, extend over and then whatever, walkway to the lift.
Somebody got any more stairs now, because you're going like your foot?
Well, you mean.
It could fit likewise and achieve the elevation difference that you need. There may be a little bit that would still encroach on the right of way, but assuming that the rest of it is not, the rest of the encroachments are not there anymore, it would still be far less than the original approved encroachment.
So you'd be in the easement area that's already been approved?
Would not be within that specific area, but in terms of square footage.
It'd be less square footage, most likely.
So does that mean that they, they'd still have to go to city council for that?
Yeah, any encroachment that's different than, that's approved, you'd still have to go back.
So it's even, so you have to go back anyway?
So there's really no way to avoid having. So there's really no way to avoid having to go to the city council?
There's no way.
How does he feel about that proposal?
If they have to go back anyway, why not go back with this? I mean, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean...
I think the indication is pretty clear that it's not going to be...
Well, four, well, there's, it's somewhere four on that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't...
I don't, I mean, I wouldn't bet on that, just because I'm not for it tonight. I mean, like, look, you know, if a guy puts up an illegal fence, and like, we give him an easement, he pays us a thousand dollars a year. I mean, so, I mean...
Yes.
That's really a thousand dollars a year, but I don't know how much more.
So we're trying to give the applicant some direction, so that they don't do all this, and then...
No, I mean, I think Carter saw, Carter saw, Yvonne and I didn't raise our hands, so he's like, I don't want to go back before council. That's totally your decision, because, like you said, you have more than just the ramp and the right of way. You have three or four other things, so, whatever you want to do.
So we do, when, since you're coming back, how about coming back with two proposals on that?
I was just going to suggest that. What if I just come up with...
Tell us how much square footage.
Two proposals, one with a lift, and one with the existing, keeping the existing plan, I'll go to council and see how they...
I think with each of those proposals, you should be prepared to tell us the impact on how long it would take to implement, and whether or not you're going to be able to have occupancy of the building during that construction.
Well, usually it's rocky to be best.
Yeah.
I am in agreement. However, with each of those proposals, we should be aware of the impact that it has on the length of time.
Right, but Eric, but also bear in mind that, that it requires two, two sessions of council to get ordinance through.
Correct.
And that cannot happen in December, it has to start in January. So no matter what we're doing here tonight, it's still two.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just saying that if they, if they were to do that construction, can the building be occupied while...
That's a, that's a fair statement.
Fixing the ramp.
Right.
Like, it's just, we need to understand the impacts of implementing those particular solutions.
Will it still have access from the inside?
Yeah, like, what is the...
Right, right, what is, what, what...
What is the plan if that is...
I would say that that would be the same thing, that what we're talking about, if we're talking about the facade and, and whatever you're doing on the outside, can people still be living inside? You know, I think that when you come back, those are the things that we just really need to know, what's the impact to these people here, that can they get in while you're making these modifications here? Because if there's an ADA access inside...
They should be able to get in, but it's the issue of, we have to be able to get the ceiling to do it.
Right, right. Yep.
It's just simply understanding the...
Yep. So is it, is it clear what we're, what we're asking for?
Yeah, no, I was just, I was just thinking about maybe doing a lift in the garbage room, where I have stairs. I suppose a stair, so I use a lift for ADA.
There are options.
And then it's nothing outside. Then I remove... Could probably do that. Yeah, I could probably do... Why?
To prove that.
Under ADA, we have to have, we have to...
And we're all good with...
You don't want to... Yeah, no, I get it, it's just...
All right, I'll make two.
Garbage room doesn't sound like a good...
Yeah, no, this is not flashing.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll think about it.
It's 11:10.
You got it? You got those, you got an idea what you need to do?
I have two plans that I'm going to submit for the front. The existing plan and one with a lift. With a time period attached to it.
Okay.
All right, so I think we've covered where we need to go.
Where we need to go. We need to, to, what's the date? What's another date?
Could I, there's a subcommittee, right, for the design? Subcommittee?
A design review.
Design review.
Review committee?
Well, this is our last planning board meeting for the year.
For the year, right.
And Alexis...
Was on the design review committee.
Was on the design review, so we need to appoint a new person.
Yeah. Well, we can, we, we've left it open for, to be able to do it.
I mean, my, my hope is, where I'm getting is just maybe I could work with one or two, or the member of the board, whatever, to try and come up with, help me come up with a, a direction.
The issue's going to be more so trying, making sure that we can get three people together, and I think, you know, we want to get, to move this along, just as much as you do, we do. So I, I don't see a problem with us getting together and doing that. As for a design review?
Yeah, I'm open to do it.
We're open to that, absolutely. Absolutely, I think we can get three people to do that, that's not a problem.
When is the earliest you can get back on?
The, the next time that we have is the ninth, but that's one of your other applications is on there.
Yeah, 6:14.
6:14. So if you want to move 6:14, we could have see you on the ninth. So it's half...
Well, we could, we could probably do both. Well, how many are on for the ninth? How many have?
We have the reorder, and then we have this, and you know that this is not going to be short.
Well...
Eric is out. Eric is out on that side.
What, as far as the design committee, is that informally, do I call, how does that work?
That's informal, we just find a time and get together. It's informal.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so that could be any day of the week, during the day, and, you know, it's not a public, it's not a public...
No, no.
There's no court.
There's no court, I mean, we're...
It's open to the public, but not public.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we can get together on that, if that, you just have to let us know, and we'll work through Marie to kind of say, all right, when's the first time that you can get together? When you're ready to show something and discuss? That's, that's when we start.
Let's get us on for January ninth. You got to lose these two numbers.
I'll be in Lake Tahoe.
When do you leave? Do you want to do a special meeting?
Time of the seventh to the...
All right, but we still have James, so we have seven minutes.
But James wasn't here tonight.
You're not going to be here on the ninth, and the next one is the 23rd.
Yeah, I would, I would try to hit for the ninth if we could.
It's up to you. Let's, let's go for this.
All right, carry to the ninth?
And you're going to bump the other.
Well, I don't know that we have to bump it.
They're not going to, they're, they're, the reorder and this, they're not going to hit an application.
What was that? What else is on?
Six fourteen. Let's, yeah, let's, because it's already adjourned.
Exactly, so let's put this on, all right? That'll be on, the odds are we won't get to six fourteen, but let's get this one.
Okay, so you put this one on first, the other one on second, and you can't get through it, can't get through it.
All right, so we're going to, so can I get a motion to carry this application till January ninth with no further notice?
So long as the act of extends second time, okay? So, so granted, okay? All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes, we do, we're ready, it was already seconded.
Second.
Roll call. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinton? Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yeah.
Eric Alapo?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo? Vice Chair Rick Lambert? Chairman Mr. Barbara Herzak? Okay, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All of you favorite?
Yes.